I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the Town of Burlington will be holding the June 20th, 2024 meeting as a hybrid meeting. The governor issued an executive order on March 12th, 2020, authorizing remote meetings under the general law, Chapter 38, Section 20, extended by Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023, including permitting remote meetings and participation until March 31st, 2024. Staff?
As always, members of the public are welcome to attend this in-person meeting, but please note while an option for remote attendance or participation is being provided as a courtesy to the public, the meeting and hearing will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast unless otherwise required by law. Members of the public with a particular interest and a specific item on the agenda should make plans for in-person versus virtual attendance accordingly. Those seeking to attend remotely may do so via the following. The URL is townofburlingtonwebex.com. Our meeting number, access code, is 2349-189-3480, and our meeting password is 1645. You can join the WebEx on your phone at 617-315-0704. Members of the public looking to participate on WebEx, please raise your hand, and staff will send you a request to unmute at the appropriate time. Besides WebEx, we are being broadcast on the BCAT Government Channel. You can find it on Comcast 99, RCN 15, Verizon 41. We're also streamed live on Facebook Live via the BCAT Government Facebook page.
Thank you, Liz. Public participation, so public participation is used by anyone to speak on an item that is not before the board during this meeting. All speakers must identify themselves first, and then given a maximum of three minutes to speak, I'll then determine whether to not to recognize board members for additional discussion. It's recommended the speaker provide an email address, as planning staff will follow up. As a reminder, our staff can be reached anytime by emailing the planning department, planning@burlington.org. Is there anyone in the audience or online who is here to speak on an item that is not on the agenda this evening? Okay, seeing none. Announcements?
So, this Saturday is the Burlington Sculpture Park's Pigs on Parade, and that will be at 10:00 a.m. on the Town Common. The Hazard Mitigation Plan Public Workshop will be next Wednesday, June 26th, at 6:00 p.m., and that is going to be hybrid, with in-person being in the Annex Basement, and then it will also be virtual via WebEx. In just a few weeks, it will be the Fourth of July, and on that date, which is a Thursday, all town offices will be closed. The Zoning Bylaw Review Committee will next meet on Wednesday, July 12th, at 6:30 p.m., and that will be via Zoom. And then the next planned meeting after this will be July 18th, so we will not meet for another four weeks.
Okay. And during that time, the September warrants will be discussed?
Yes.
Okay, great. Any other members have announcements? Okay, none. All right, let's go with legal. Notices of interest, none. Nonapprovals, none. Administrative matters, let's go to Item 6A, which is a discussion of the amendment to an accessory use regulations of the zoning bylaws submitted by the Zoning Bylaw Review Committee.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for having me, air conditioning on. Thank you for having me at this meeting.
Can you try, can you try the other microphone, the other, maybe that one is too close to a speaker? I'm betting that this one, hopefully have a better.
Okay. Better?
That's better.
Thank you. I don't need to hear that. Anyway, thanks for having me, Shari Ellis, Chair of Zoning Bylaw Review Committee. I also believe that my vice chair, Betsy Hughes, is online, in case there's any questions or she wants to comment. This zoning bylaw amendment was submitted to the Select Board for September Town Meeting. It was submitted, I believe, last January, and we pulled it because we needed a little bit additional information, which we now have. And so I would, I guess, ask the Chair, do you want me to give a full presentation on this, give you an update on the status? How would you like me to?
Well, you've-
I don't want to take up your whole meeting.
Sure, you've been, you've been before us, before on this one, and I know there were some comments, so maybe a summary of the status would be great.
Okay, so you've, you have the warrant article before you. The major change that has been done since we saw last was the Section 5, the very last section, is the administration and procedures, because we added that section, the Section 9.7, to this bylaw. So in other words, this is the enforcement of, and the administration of, the bylaw. And that is where we got some guidance from Town Council, who has seen this and is fine with it. Also, the Building Inspector, Inspector of Buildings, Mark DePelle, is part of our Zoning Bylaw Review Committee. He has seen this, he has no problems with it, he, you know, thinks it's great. So, that's the major change from what we presented before. The other change that I spoke with Chair Gaffney, and he reminded me back in January, in the second section, Article 2 definitions by editing them underneath building height, the last sentence, "not included are spires, cupolas, antennas, or similar parts of structures that do not enclose potentially habitable floor spaces," that will be removed. We had a conversation about the applicability, and if such an item is included, that could be left to the Building Inspector to determine, you know, the extent of that, and if it applies, and if there needs to be an appeal for it or anything. So, those are pretty much the updates to this. If you'd like more explanation or, you know, have questions, I'm certainly happy to answer.
Thank you, Ms. Ellis. Why don't I start off with Member Cavina?
Being the Planning Board's representative to the CFC, I've seen this a few times. My only concern is that the Building Inspector feels he can enforce it and is okay with the language, whatever you say he is.
Yes, yes. It's clear language in all of these sections, therefore he can, you know, alert residents or, you know, applicants, whoever's applying, to specific sections. And they're clearly defined, clearly regulated, when you need a permit, when you don't. That's the whole purpose of this amendment, is to really determine when you need a permit, when you don't, and where the accessory use structure would be, could be located.
Thank you very much. Members, other one?
So, the items that qualify under this by the definition of what a structure is, would have to include a roof?
The structure does not have to include a roof. That's a building includes a roof. So a structure does not have to include a roof. It could be, I think we talked maybe before about this, about one of the trampoline things, right? So that doesn't include a roof, but it is an accessory structure.
And that, we also determined a swing set would fall under this.
Yes.
Okay. I feel like that is definitely where one of my issues lies, is to require residents to possibly have to get a permit for a swing set, when we all know plots of land in town lately are shrinking, and so the likelihood of a swing set being pretty close or within a setback is going to be a high likelihood, and to ask families to get a permit for a swing set or a trampoline sounds pretty difficult. So I think that is where my issue lies. But I, the purpose of this, for like sheds and all that stuff, love, I think it looks great for that, but if we can include exclusions-
So I can try and answer that?
Okay.
Through the Chair? Plots of land aren't necessarily getting smaller. We like to try and keep the 20,000 square foot. Yes, there are smaller ones, but I don't know that they're necessarily becoming more of those. This really, by having, if something is larger than the 65 square feet or larger than 10 feet, it's not difficult to get a permit. It's the same permit you would get for going up to the building. Actually, it's online now, so you don't even have to go up to the Inspector of Buildings. And what this does is alert, it just makes you know where you can and cannot. If you want to put your swing set because your plot of land happens to be small, and the setbacks are the same, no matter if it's a small lot or a large lot, that's our zoning bylaws, you can appeal, and you can go to the Board of Appeals and say, you know, we need to put this in this location because of this, you know, the, what is it called?
Hardship. You have hardship?
The hardship, thank you, I couldn't think of the word. The topography of the land, this is the only spot left on my property. So there are ways to get around that, and if the zoning Board of Appeals then determines that, yes, that's the only spot it can be, then that's, and by having to do that, if this is a large structure, and it's the only spot where it can be, they need to go to the Board of Appeals. Through that process, then the neighbors are alerted to this, and so that they will know that, geez, this structure, whatever it's going to be, may be close to my property line. So at least they're alerted to this, and I feel like that's just being good neighbors, rather than having just these structures put up right on your property lot line without people knowing.
Do other towns have similar implementations for things like families having to go through that permit and appeal process to put a swing set in place?
I actually don't know the answer to that, so I could look into that.
I would like to understand-
This stemmed from concerns from residents about, you know, the lack of clarity of our bylaws. And, you know, online I've seen things that, you know, well, I wanted to put a shed in, and I told him under 200 square feet I didn't have to, but wait, now I have to. And so there's that clarity, and there's room for interpretation, and different inspectors will interpret things different ways.
Yeah.
So by having less room for interpretation and more clear bylaws.
No, and like I said, like, this is excellent and very much needed. I just am concerned about the things that now will fall under it, and those being it, I mean, for someone to be, because you're right, like, plots of land necessarily haven't gotten smaller, but the available land to which to put a swing set or a trampoline, I just, I do, it feels very unfair and unkind to ask families to go through a non-easy pro, it's not an easy process to understand then further the permitting and appeal process. So that's, I would just say like that, if we can figure out where the options are for that, then it would make me much happier. That's all I have.
I have one question.
Of course.
I just want to, when you said the height requirement, you're going to leave it to the Building Inspector?
No, no, no. The height requirement for an accessory use permit is 10 feet.
Okay.
What I was talking about earlier was underneath the definition of building, so the building height.
Okay.
We took out the extra little cupolas and whatever else the other language was in there, the spires and things like that. We took that language out. So these are tiny little things that really don't affect building height, and if there is something that happens to be very large, the Building Inspector can, you know, interpret if he wants to include that or not. But these little things are tiny things in the scope of an entire building.
But he is going to be consistent all the way around, because without it happening, and not like, like, how is he going to say each case is going to do it case by case, you're saying?
If it's not included, yes, that's what would happen, is if something came up that he wanted to, you know, interpret, then he would have to.
Okay. Ms. LaRue?
Sorry, I'm late, and I obviously missed the benefit of the beginning part of this conversation, but I have read this previously. I, the only concern I have is that the definition of structure may be a little too vague, because I understand what we're trying to achieve, and I think we want to avoid things like sheds and garages and barns and things like that, but as, as Jess was saying, I don't think we want to make it so that a family can't have a sandbox or a swing set.
This does not prevent anybody from not having anything. That's a triple double negative or something.
We don't want families to have to come, go through a long process for something like a swing set or a sandbox, but we do want them to have to go through a process for a barn or a shed or something like that. That's what you're trying to achieve.
If I may, if I may, we're talking about structures that are outside of the setback, is that correct?
Inside.
Inside, inside the setback.
Yeah.
So, so you could put a shed, or you could put a playground anywhere within the setbacks that you have, but not outside, is that correct?
Correct.
Right, so we're not saying every, every swing set needs a permit?
No. Well, a swing set that would be above 10 feet in height or larger than 65 square feet would, and there are some enormous playground structures.
My swing set would require a permit.
Mine would need it too.
And I've seen them on people's property lines.
Yeah.
And so blocking views of, you know, what that other neighbor can see. So it's, it's not requiring, and to get an accessory permit, according to the Inspector of Buildings, is you file the application for the accessory use permit, and you have it, or if you, because you have to have the little drawing of where you're going to put it, either that, or he denies it, and then you would go to the Board of Appeals. But it's not a difficult process. It's not like an entire building that you're going through where you have to have, you know, engineering plans and, you know, a lot of detailed drawings.
Let me ask another question. Is, are there fees related to this?
Yes.
Yes. What are the fees? You may have discussed that before.
No, it's in this, okay. It's the same as currently any building department fee, and I do have, because-
About $50 likely.
$50, okay.
Or at a minimum, minimum $50.
Minimum of $50.
Board of Appeals, there are costs associated with that as well.
To an appeal, yes.
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 And that is, it just feels very unfair for families trying to do things outside of sheds.
Thank you.
And yeah, I mean, I, I am sympathetic to what you're saying, Jess, just plain devil's advocate, they could put their swing set-
On a property.
On, not, not within the setback. Bring it 15 feet, it is 15 feet, right?
Correct.
Away from their neighbor's property.
Through you, Mr. Chair, can I ask a question?
Of course, yes.
Can you, I guess, just talk me through the adminis, like, the procedures for how this would work with the Building Department? And the other question I have is, I don't know if a lot of families who are getting swing sets are going to know that they need a permit. So is their neighbor going to tattle on them, and then it's going to be like a weird thing in the neighborhood, or how, like, how does this work?
So I guess there could, there could be, there could be a need for some kind of announcement or something, right? As it happens now, people tattle all the time, right? And it, I shouldn't say all the time, but people tattle now. So, you know, somebody just put this, you know, shed or swing set right on my fence line, you know? So this is how this all started, is, basically started not with swing sets but with sheds, is that, you know, well, we didn't used to have to, you know, we could put it anywhere on our property. It didn't matter where it was. Well, it did matter where it was, it was just never enforced. So, yes, there's the matter of, you know, public announcement, so that you would know to need a building permit if it falls under that category. And then there's the enforcement that you're asking about, is that the permit would be online. Obviously, the permit hasn't been developed yet, but it would be a simple accessory use permit, and you would apply online just as you do for a building permit. To more of the details of that, I can't address, because that would be through the Building Inspector. I'm not sure exactly, you know, where he's going to go with this.
Follow up, sorry, Barbara. Through you, Mr. Chair, so this would be adding a section in our bylaw to allow, to, for this thing called an administrative permit for the Building Inspector?
Correct.
Correct?
Yes.
It's a zoning bylaw, it's not-
Right, right, no, no, I know, I'm just-
That was to myself, I was just, I didn't know.
That's why I'm here.
Okay. And so, what constitutes an admin, okay, so the only type of administrative permit is an accessory use structures permit?
Yes.
Member LaRue?
Thank you. Has the Building Inspector weighed in on this?
He's on our committee, so he's been involved in drafting, well, not really drafting it, but he's been on board all along.
Okay.
We, you missed a little bit of the beginning, where we were before you in January, we did not have this administrative part in the end. Town Council has drafted that, and the Inspector of Buildings is on board with that and is fine with that.
Okay.
So collaborative effort all around on that end.
Does he get a lot of problems with it? I'm just curious if you see a lot of this.
So the Board of Appeals, they have signage appeals, and they have variances for, you know, accessory uses. They have a lot of them. So this is kind of where, you know, he'll deny something, or a neighbor will tattle or complain about, somebody just put, you know, a shed on my property line.
Does a treehouse fall into this?
Yeah.
It would have, yes, and over 10 feet.
Yeah.
But, and I, I had, when we, we had a swing set, we had a very large one, it was over 10 feet, it was right next to the fence.
Yep.
And we, you know, could peek over and see what our neighbors were doing, otherwise it wasn't there. And I would say that if I was the neighbor, I'd be very uncomfortable with that, but you try to be a good neighbor and you don't say anything, but, you know, I think in this case, what it does, it defines it, such that you're not the bad guy against your neighbor, and it's just, it's very straightforward in the bylaw.
It's really, just keep it off of the property lines. Doesn't say you can't do it, just keep it off of the property.
If you want it on the property line, come forward to Board of Appeals and everyone get out and-
And explain why, yeah.
Yes, Mr. Cavina?
Why is this small, I guess you'd call it shed for rubbish bins not require a permit, Shari?
The little, the little tool shed, because-
Not tall enough.
Not big enough either.
It's not tall enough, too small.
The trash barrel, this shed, I showed a couple of pictures, because it's not 65 square feet and it's not 10 feet tall, so.
Okay.
Sandboxes would fit under, well, depends on-
If it's under 65 square feet, not 10 feet tall, can I put it in the setback without a variance? No. Yes?
I think you can.
You don't need a permit, so therefore-
Yeah.
You know, good neighbor says you wouldn't, but-
So a shed under 65 square feet, which is what, eight by eight?
Underneath, right.
Under 10 feet would not require a variance nor a permit.
Correct.
Correct?
Yes.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. Yeah, that's the only, the comment I had is that I get it, you know, and I understand the reasoning for it, and it really does help define, and I would do comment on the, the height comment that you had on Section 2.2, and I asked that be taken out because it was defining a couple of things, spires, copulas, antennas, then it went to our similar structures. So if you, if you're calling out three, and then you're putting in other similar structures, I said, well, you know, why don't we just say any kind of structure that is not determined to be, you know, part of the, the, as inhabitable portion of the, the structure? So, thank you for that, and it helps.
Right, and, and to, to further that is that the way you determine the building height is the average, mean, you know, so this little item, copula or spire, is not going to really change that variable, that number, at all.
I, I, my point was that it may not be little, right? The little, you're talking a little structure, a little copula, but without it defining what little means, these things can get fairly large.
Okay.
And, you know, that's, that's, my, my, my wife's nephew has a copula that's, you know, he can, he can fit probably 10 people in it, you know? I'm not saying that's the case, but that's, it's, it's in his house, but, you know, things can get expanded a bit. Okay, thank you. So, no further discussion, I know that we'll be seeing you in a couple of weeks.
Thank you. Any, if you come up with other questions or thoughts or-
Yeah, I think for that next meeting, I just would like to understand how other towns handle swing sets.
Okay.
Okay. We can look into that.
Have you ready, because we'll see, we'll-
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll see, we'll see, we'll see them in a couple of weeks, because we'll have to vote on our, our town meeting disposition of this. Okay?
Mr. Chair, I would like to make a motion to continue this discussion to the Planning Board meeting of July 18th, 2024.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Two, three, four, five, zero, zero. Thank you.
Hey, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to take Items 6B and 6C together for discussion purposes.
Second.
Okay, vote, motion second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Five, zero, zero. All right, so 6B and 6C, this is Discussion of Mall Road Mixed Use Rezoning Initiative, Economic Development Department, and 6C is a Discussion Planning Board Rules and Regulations, Mall Road Mixed Use Design Guidelines. The Economic Development Department is the app. This is just a discussion, sorry, discussion purposes. Yes? Good evening.
Good evening. For the record, my name's Melissa Tantaklis, work as the Economic Development Director for the town, and this is David on the team, David Gamble with Gamble Associates. He's the urban designer, as well as Ted Brovitz, who's online, who was Community Design, Brovitz Community Design, and we're working together, as you guys have known this for a while, and those who just are tuning in, we've been working on this for the last two and a half years approximately, when we first did some analysis of the area. And I'm going to stand up and just, you know, give a picture of this aerial I came across that I really kind of enjoy to, to look at myself. Maybe a hold on, maybe a hold on of that. And the aerial really gives just a picture, a kind of a grander picture of what you see on screen, and this is, I would say, this is really our economic development engine. All the buildings here, all the commercial properties, the values, right in here bring in about 8 million square feet of commercial space in this corridor. As you can see, you kind of, it straddles like a long narrow strip, and I don't know if anyone can see this on ECAT, yeah, there you go, thanks, ECAT. So that is what we're looking at, just kind of an aerial of that. And I bring this to your attention, because as we are going to present to you tonight, we've been looking at this entire area. I think the next question, as we move forward, the mixed use district, is how much of this area should we really bring to town meeting? Shall we look at it in the whole context of what we're examining, which is about, you know, 43 parcels and nearly 500 acres, or should we bring to town meeting something more modest in a Phase 1? And so those are one question for you guys to consider. Ted, I know you have your, your slideshow ready to go. I also had a couple of things I kind of wanted to share with this group, that we've also met with the Land Use Committee to start talking to them about some ideas of an approach with town meeting. We've met with the Subcommittee of Planning Board on this, Jess and Barbara. So with that, I think, Ted, I'd like you to probably go into it, but feel free to, you know, have some conversation or questions, if that's okay with the Chair, as this is a discussion, and we're here to help start to answer questions, as much as still looking for some input for the next step to town meeting here.
Okay, I, I don't have control of the slides, so who is-
Ted, just let me know when to go to the next slide, and I'll do it.
Oh, okay, Caleb. Yeah, next slide, please. Okay, so at the Spring Town Meeting, we adopted several amendments that have to be made as part of the process of adopting the overall mix of bylaw, the Mall Road area. They include the definitions, use regulations, general standards, specifically the parking requirements, those were upgraded. The change to the major, to the use table was really helpful, it set its tone for us to add the mix district in the fall. And listed a really great job at shepherding these, these amendments through the town meeting. So the Phase 2 process, at the town, at the Fall Town Meeting, we have to adopt the Article 3, the district itself, the map, with the new mixed district, as well as the description of the district. We have to again go back into the use table and add the mixed district, and add some additional types of uses, including lab buildings, mixed, mixed use buildings, and several other things that we're going to flesh out the mixed district itself. that we're going to flesh out the mixed district itself. Under Article 5, we have to make some changes to the dimensional requirements. Specifically, we have to add a simple recognition in the tables, the density schedule for the mixed district. And then in Articles 10 and 11, special regulation, we are adopting new performance standards for different types of uses that are going to be included in the mixed district to make sure that future development is, is efficient and making sure that we're protecting adjacent properties from new development as the district is adopted. And finally, in Article 14, we have a new bylaw for the mixed district. That's really what we're trying to wrap up right now. We're in a process of making refinements to it. We are, hopefully, we have to have it done by this time next week. Actually, we have to have it done the 25th, and it'd be ready for the warrant. And so we are working, you know, feverishly to do that. And that's really one of the reasons why we're here tonight is to get some, some feedback from the planning board as we move forward and try to finalize this, this bylaw. And to supplement, really quickly, just to supplement the zoning by law itself, we're putting together a series of design guidelines and standards for the mixed district. And the intention there is that we are, you know, hoping that the planning board, you know, through the site center review process can work with developers to shape a better development as it's the, as new developments come in. Next slide. So the key decisions to be made between now and next week are, first of all, the boundaries of the mixed district itself. We start out with a pretty ambitious footprint for the district, and we are proposing we might want to shave it back for the first phase. Still discussion going on in terms of the height and location of different buildings, the residential density, and what's going to be allowed by rights and by special permit. And in the bylaw itself, we have a provision that if you are, you know, at a higher density under special permit, that has to be coupled with a public benefit improvement. And that can be things such as a vine brook connections through the district. It could also be improvements on site that are publicly accessible. It can be public space currently in or around the district that needs improvements, such as the TRW park. So these are some of the issues we want to talk to you a little bit about tonight. Next slide. So a lot of you have been involved in this process for, you know, quite a while, as we have, about a year and a half, we've been putting all this stuff together. We've had a series of, you know, meetings and workshops and discussions with, you know, planning of different boards and committees, Chamber of Commerce. We had a zoning task force or advisory group that helped us go through this process and sort of refining the, you know, the footprint of the zoning district as well as the actual regulations. And so the slide at the left, we're looking at what the existing zoning district looks like in the Mall Road area. There's five different districts. And what we're proposing is that we, we convert that into three districts over time, starting with a mixed innovation district, a special district, and existing planned development. And this is the original proposal that we've been working on over the last few months, but in recent weeks, we've taken sort of a turn in looking at maybe shrinking the footprint of the first phase of the, of the mixed district. Next, next slide. So what we're looking at is, for the first phase, is to rezone the area, including the mall, Bricksmore property, the coal property, and there's three parcels in the district that are not under the PDD. And start with that is our first phase of mixed district implementation. We were doing this because we know that there's developers in this area that are interested in doing new development. And we still, you know, strategically for, you know, for town meeting, we think that if we start with a small area and we, everyone's comfortable with it, we work out some of the things that might come up, then we can get ready for the next phase, which would be to extend itself down Mall Road over to the South Bedford Road. Next slide. So this, this zoning area that we're proposing, this phase one, we're identifying the vine brook as an area of public resource and hopefully would be connected through new developments over time. We have a series of requirements under fleet streets. So we had broken down different types of streets. For example, Gateway Boulevards include the Mall Road and the Turnpike. Collective Roads would include South Bedford in the future. Commercial Street would be District Avenue. And then local streets would be like the smaller streets in and around the mall itself. Next slide. So one of the things we want to make sure is that as the development happens on Mall Road, particularly on the north side of the corridor, we protect the neighborhood behind us. So we've put together assistance, requirements for a transitional buffer. So it would be eight feet tall and eight feet wide, and it would be landscaped and adding, you know, trees and, you know, basically trying to screen the adjacent neighborhoods so that we minimize the impact that we make on the neighborhood over time. Next slide. So with the table of use, we now have to add the mixed district, which we actually have put together a draft amendment for. And that's going to include mixed use and some of the building types that we're proposing in the, in the district itself. So we've got a draft of the, the warrant article, and we'd like to share it with you. You can probably send it out tomorrow and can take a look at it.
Sorry, can I stop you here for a second? Can you go back one? I don't know if you're.
Back one over there.
Yeah. And this, this is a good presentation. I don't, I don't, there are not numbers, so I don't know which one to go back. Okay. On the, on the transitional buffer, you're planning to put walls up between the area between, let's say, residential and, and the overlay district? Is that correct?
Well, there's fencing right now on a lot of those properties, but it's, there's new development proposed, and let's say it's taller than what's there today. You know, there's a two-story building there today and maybe it's a four-story in the future. Then we just want to make sure this, you know, this is, this can be modified by the planning board, but yes, the intention is that we'd have an opaque barrier along the back perimeter, and then we would landscape it, and hopefully over time, the trees would fill in and create a more natural screen.
So it'd be just that blue line that's going over the top would be all wall that goes all the way up to, from South Bedford Street down to, I don't know where it stops, probably.
It goes all the way down. I think the.
It goes from one end to the other of the, of Mall Road.
So it's going to be an entire wall with no openings or anything? It's just a, just a.
Well, there could be, there could be openings in the, in the.
Where the streets are, but, right.
But, right, yeah. I mean, we obviously want to make connections between the neighborhood's program, but generally speaking, we want to do a better job of screening visually and in terms of noise as well.
There wouldn't be, there wouldn't be a whole, are you suggesting? If I, if I may, Ted, just add to that. I think the intent here is more to tell folks who might be interested in doing development in that area that based on their development, there is a likelihood that we would require these transitional buffers, depending on what's going up there. It doesn't mean they have to happen. It means we can always have the right to modify them. Correct me if I'm wrong, when they come through the planning board, but the idea is so that they understand if a development does go up.
It could have them.
That this is what, something we'd be looking for.
Yeah, there would be a requirement on a landscape buffer in those zones.
Those are requirement, not an option. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, yeah, where, where I'm.
But there's, I just wanted to make clear that it's not a contiguous wall, again, with the line. That's just.
Where, where do they, where does it break?
If your parcel abuts the line, you're required to put a transitional buffer in.
So can you repeat that again?
If you're a parcel, abuts that transitional line, that's just an indication that you would have to put in a transitional buffer to the parcel behind you.
But.
Are you looking at the blue line, correct?
Miss Lou, was it?
You would have to put the transitional buffer in if you were to increase your building height?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. Not if it stayed the same.
Correct.
Okay.
So if it stays the same, then we have a break in the wall.
And only for your property. It's not saying now you need to go build the wall for the entire blue line.
But your next door, your next door would have the same wall.
If they were.
If they were to develop.
Right. So ultimately, if they're all developed, you have a continuous wall. And where I'm coming from is, you know, everyone says wall never happen. We know that everything that will never happen, happens. But, yeah, I'm, I'm just, this continuous wall thing in my brain is, you know, thinking about the Southeast Expressway dividing neighborhoods and I'm thinking, you know, although you don't want animals to roam over that section because they'll probably get hit by cars, but today it seems to be going, well, except for Meadow Road where the turtles are going across the Staples, but we should have a turtle crossing sign. Go ahead.
I understand the need in what you're trying to achieve with the transitional buffer, protecting the neighborhoods, but I also have some concerns about how that could develop over time. Assume, you know, one property owner may build their wall, and then it could be 10, 15, 20 years later when the next property owner builds their wall and maybe the same materials aren't available, it could end up looking kind of bad. So I think we need to think about how we would implement that to make sure that it looks good and to make sure that it does. I mean, we have to check with conservation too and see if they have concerns about wildlife being able to move freely. I don't know. But right now, you're only suggesting that this be implemented in the mall and district and across the street, Bricksmore properties, correct?
Correct.
So this pink area where Leahy is and all that, that's not part of this initial.
That will not go to town meeting this time.
Correct. If you go to this slide ahead of this one, before it, I just wanted to make sure everybody was clear on that, that it's just those three properties.
Back, backwards?
Oh, no, oh, sorry.
There. Yes. So for those properties, there's really very, very small amount of area that would require the transitional zone because most of that does not abut residential property. Am I correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
Although I will say, this is still an enormous geography.
Yeah.
Yes, of course.
The scale is deceiving.
Yes.
So this, although this is the first phase, it's over 100 acres.
Right, but if I'm reading this correctly, I don't think much of that property, I think very little of that property abuts residential property. Am I correct in that?
It's a lot of wetlands.
Yes.
Okay, great.
That is good.
Go ahead, Mr. Cavino.
Question on the wall. What's the purpose of the wall?
Ted, could you explain, it's not a wall necessarily?
I can't hear you. Say that again.
Well, it's initially, it's to try to create some screening, original screening, until the trees can grow up and create a natural buffer. There's really not an intention to stop people or animals from going back and forth to the district. It's really just trying to protect the neighbors. And, you know, we can make some adjustments to this so that, you know, it's, it's something that would be negotiated between developer and the planning board in terms of whether or not any screen wall, any kind of wall is needed at all. But I think I would certainly emphasize putting in evergreens so that, you know, visual and noise point of view, it would, it would. We've heard a lot from some of the neighbors that, you know, they're concerned about the noise and the light, and appreciate having brought that.
When, when you say wall, I think wall. But that's not really what you mean. You mean some sort of a, or is it what you mean? Do you mean an actual timber brick wall? Or do you mean a wall constructed of evergreens and arborites and?
No, it could be, you know, chain link. It could be, you know.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
I'm going to probably.
Let me, let me just say, from what I understand, it's a wall. It's an actual wall as you see there.
All right, well, that's never going to fly at town meeting.
Well, and, and it's required, so it's not an option, from what I understand, if the building goes up, right?
So the purpose is what, to keep animals from getting into?
No.
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 As I understand it.
Go ahead.
As I understand it, it's to provide a visual buffer between the neighboring property and the newly more developed property. Am I correct in understanding that it would be at the discretion of the planning board as to how that wall was implemented? Whether it was a wooden wall or a, a wall of trees, trees and other landscaping or, am I understanding that correctly or does it?
That's, that's correct.
Yes, you are correct.
That's correct.
And it only happens if the building is over a certain height.
Correct.
Well, unless your wall is four stories high.
It doesn't matter.
At the top of the building, so why is that a criteria, number one? And number two, if I'm sitting there in my backyard, I'm not sure whether I'd rather be looking at a timber or brick wall or blah blah, whatever it might be, than doming, although maybe I would, I don't know, especially if I was allowed to paint. So I, I'm really, I think that, I, I don't want to get hung up on walls when we're dealing with it.
I think for my, for you, Chair, the, the idea of a wall, it's, the idea is a transitional buffer, and in the design standards, a wall, evergreens are in there as options for the planning board to consider. It is putting forward options dependent on the development concept that comes before the planning board. But what it does is it sets an expectation that it has to be something well-designed and it has to provide a buffer for your adjacent neighbor. And that's really the intention here. I, I, you know, a chain link fence or a three, like story wall, those are not what we're talking about.
You might want to consider using a word.
Just buffer.
Other than wall.
Yes.
Whatever, whether it might be, even though it was.
I think I'm not used to.
If I'm.
It could be a cedar fence.
Hold on a second. Go ahead, Miss Lou.
I'm envisioning, one of the neighborhoods is very close to this, not in this particular phase, but Laurel Hill Lane is very close. I would imagine if, this is how I think it would work, if that property, I forget the name of it, where Chipotle is, where it's to be developed.
Linear.
Linear, thank you. I would imagine that as part of the planning board process, we would be reaching out to neighbors. Neighbors would be part of that process. We would discuss with the neighbors what they would want to see. Maybe they would want to see a dense vegetative buffer. Maybe they say, no, I want a wall. And it would be the planning board's decision in consultation with the neighbors, what we were to require. We could require a wall if we so desired, or we could require dense landscaping if we desire, and, or something in the middle.
Correct. And what this zoning proposal does before you, it gives the developer and the planning board a visual cue, that's what that blue line is, and that's what that is pointing to as a buffer, to give both of you awareness that that is the expectation from developer and planning board, that that should be, you know, explored under the development proposal.
Thank you.
Yes, Member Sutherland, please.
I do think it would be worthwhile to add, to add to the slide as well as the details, to have a conversation with CONCOM and get their recommendation for, you know, if we choose vegetation, what would that look like? I think that will, because the purpose of this whole thing is also to reduce steps needed to get input and information. And so if we already have that input and information and we so decide to do landscaping, then we would already have that in the document. So I do think it would be really powerful for us to already have that input from CONCOM.
Great, okay, let's go to the table. News Regulations, whatever slide that is. Yep, thank you. Okay, you may proceed.
Next slide.
Next slide.
Yep.
Okay, this is the, the section 5.2, the density regulation schedule. All we need to do here in terms of going to town meeting is add the mixed district. And the dimensional standards themselves for the mix go into Article, the new Article 14, the bylaw itself. So we just have to make a reference in. So we just have to make a reference in, on this table. So in addition to revising the use table again, we're also putting together performance standards for different uses. And we already have performance standards for a number of uses in Articles 10 and 11. And so some of them are not, are not there that we think are really important as we, you know, as we have more development in mixed districts. Things such as lodging uses, eating and drinking, auto-oriented uses. And there's some accessory uses that we want to address as well. Make sure, again, that, that we are providing good quality development, but at the same time protecting surrounding neighbors.
And Ted, I'd like to just interject here for a second.
I'm gonna go first on this one. What's an auto-oriented use? Is that auto-oriented?
That would be a gas station or a repair shop or a buffalo or, you know, anything that has to do with repairs or...
Yep, member Lou.
So under primary uses... I'm sorry, under primary uses, it says protect, protected and exempt uses. Does that mean those uses are by right without requiring a special permit?
For you, Mr. Chair, I think that would be uses that...
No, no, there's...
Hold on, please, hold on.
I think that would be Dover, I think Ted's referring to Dover Amendment uses. So churches and schools and exempt from the zoning.
I'm just looking at where it says primary uses, underneath it it says protected and exempt uses. Those are, okay, so the following, the ones underneath that in blue.
Oh, no.
Those are primary uses, but do they still require a special permit?
Yes, that's, you can't really see that it's, that's, that's saying, that's listing those. Instead of listing out all protected exempt uses.
Okay.
And that's just saying that there and then everything else is separate from...
I thought that was a subhead, but it's not.
Am I correct?
Okay.
So the primary uses, though, would still require a special permit or not?
So that's where we have the use table. So the use table is not in that packet currently. That's still being worked on. There had been a lot of discussion if the auto-oriented uses should be in there or not because in the overall district, there's some in there. But I know it's very strictly regulated in our use table and we, you know, we've had these discussions. So I think we had to take another look at that in terms of that should be allowed in there for the overall district. I think there was some special permit, so we'll have to go give you the actual list so you can go through it, every use again. Generally speaking, I would say that we followed what is in the innovation district is allowed in the mixed-use zoning district and as well as the housing portion. And then those are then guided by building types. That's really kind of how the, the mixed-use district works.
In terms of feedback from this list?
Yes.
The only thing that's really causing me concern is the auto-oriented uses.
I think we've discussed that, right, Liz and Ted? We had that as question marks on several drafts. Yeah.
All right, next. Next slide.
Slide.
Any more further questions there?
So lodging uses would be hotels?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Some concern on that, too.
Language, yeah, yeah. Especially where it says extended stays and things like that. Okay. Go ahead.
Okay, so under Article 14, the new Article 14, we have a series of design standards for different building types. So rather than one size fits all, we have specific standards that make sure that quality buildings are part of the process. And not only in terms of building itself, but the site as far as requiring open space, having landscape parking lots, having streets, frontage, frontages. And, you know, the buildings could, you know, in terms of the, the architecture, you know, is attracted as it faces the, the street. So for each of the different building types... There are specific standards. So, for example, townhouses, multifamily, mixed-use buildings, commercial buildings, fabrication, which are light industrial buildings, have lab spaces, and all specific design standards. Next slide.
Mr. Chair.
Member Lou.
I don't expect an answer from this tonight, but one of the things that I'm, the questions coming into my mind as I'm looking at this is, within this first phase, how, how much residential, how many residential units could possibly be built? And also, the same question would pertain to, as we move forward, the other phases. But we could take this phase first. And then the multifamily building, townhouses are multifamily building too and so is the mixed-use building. So I think maybe that might be a little confusing. Might want to rename that. I'm not sure what you would name it. Is that apartment-style buildings, large-scale apartments?
It had the ground floor retail. I think that's what it's trying to do.
Yes. But multifamily building, the top right-hand?
Mm-hmm.
All of these are multifamily buildings, so...
The townhouse, the townhouses are individual units that have separate doorways. So they're basically connected horizontally.
Okay, so that's the difference.
I just wanted to, oh, I see what the difference is.
Whereas mixed-use has a common staircase and hallways.
So a mixed-use building is a kind of multifamily building, but a townhouse is not?
Strictly residential, no, that's true.
Correct.
Mixed-use has commercial on the bottom floor and can have either commercial or residential on the upper floors.
Okay, so a mixed-use building is a multifamily building, but a multifamily building is not necessarily a mixed-use building unless it has retail on first floor?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, I know that hard time is an echo, by the way. But I think your question was whether it was commercial on bottom and residential on top?
That's why I asked.
That's what it is, yeah.
All right. I had a, I had a question on this one. It has to do with the table. So the lot size and the square foot is not required, so there's no minimum lot size? Is that correct?
There's not, because there's, there's requirements for the height and footprint of the building. There's requirement for percentage of open space. There's an overall surface coverage requirement or limit. And then there's parking standards. So basically, the developer has to figure out how he puts his building on the site and at the same time, how does it provide enough parking for it and having, you know, quality open space as well as the screening where it's necessary. So really, no reason to put a minimum lot size in there because it's going to depend on the size and the scale of the development that they're proposing. But what's assured is that it's good quality open space and the pervious surface is limited and there's good screening, the street skates.
Works its way backwards, okay. So the next one, 2.3, the front yard built to zone. I'm not familiar with that term. Can you explain that to me a little bit?
Yeah, so if you're on the mall road, what we're trying to do is we're trying to create some enclosure, but at the same time, we want to make sure that, I think, at the, at the ground level, we have commercial uses so that there's a sort of vibrance on the streets and sidewalks.
Okay, thank you.
So...
I've got, I've got it, thank you. And the other thing has to do with down on, had to do with the, with the, with the walls. Where is that? Where do I see that? Am I going ahead of myself? Where is that?
Right there.
Oh, wall, common wall. So the side setback, so zero feet, if there's a common wall to what? To the next floor?
Right, like a wheelhouse.
I'm sorry, what was that?
Town, like a townhouse. There'd be no setback because they're attached.
Yeah.
Okay.
That exists.
And it's also possible for mixed-use buildings.
Okay.
Yep, okay.
It's also possible for mixed-use building if it was on law road, for example. There are adjacent properties and the one of us that built together, they...
Yep, understood. So on, one more, I think, on the 3.2, street-facing wall width, that's the same thing with regard to the 50-foot maximum when the front yard built to zone. So you want that wall as a maximum 50 feet off of the street in the sidewalk. Is that correct?
So I'm, I'm sorry, can't...
Yeah, I'll try to do a little clearer without the echo that you're hearing. So 3.2, street-facing wall width is 50-foot minimum. Is that...
Right, so, and what we want is the building to have a presence on the street. Again, try to, you know, create some enclosure and some vibrancy on the sidewalk. So we don't want buildings that are just basically touching the front edge and then going further deep. They want to, we want to make sure that they have a presence on the street. So there's a minimum front edge required.
Okay, and I'm gonna ask one more and I apologize. This is an SAT word that I probably got wrong. This fenestration. Is that, is that an offset to where the building may be offset from the bottom floor? Or what, what is that?
That is the window space on the bottom floor and the upper floor. So basically, again, you know, trying to make these vibrant commercial spaces, you know, with their standards for a minimum amount of, of windows on the, on the ground floor.
I think we, can we, can you explain just a little bit more? So I don't think we caught all of that, unless the folks here at...
Yeah, the fenestration, Chair Gaffney, is really the windows on, at the street level. So oftentimes, what's happening, you know, for cost purposes or based on design, you can have the pedestrian, like, much like, think of Kohl's, how it faces and the brick wall just goes up next to the sidewalk. So this is requiring a level, a percentage of fenestration windows on that side wall where it runs against the pedestrian network right there.
Okay. I think we've got it. So there's got to be windows and it's got to be 40% minimum. So you could have 100% of windows all the way, but it has got to be at least 40 heading up. Everyone got that one? Okay.
And, and an entrance, and an entrance off the street, yeah.
Oh, and an entrance off the street.
Yes, a street-facing entrance required.
Yes, yep, that's fair.
So as you can see, this is where it gets a little more prescriptive. You have to kind of get into how you're designing your building as you, as you're preparing your project to come to planning board. And these are the things that we've heard, you know, these are kind of the best practices in urban design that we're trying to build into this district.
Okay, thank you. All right. Thank you. Next slide.
So we're still trying to figure out the exact building heights and open space. So one of the issues is the lab building and how tall it should be. We're, we're setting the story limit at eight. But the floor plates tend to be much taller in lab buildings. They 10 to 14, 12 to 14. So we're trying to figure out, you know, what's the appropriate height and then we have to factor in the mechanicals that go on top, which typically would be about 30 feet height at least. So that's one of the things we need to figure out between now and next week. And the other thing is we want to make sure that any of the, of the buildings that have residency, whether it's mixed-use or it's a townhouse or a, or a mixed-use house, we want to make sure it's 20% open space. So we're gonna bump that up in the mixed-use building from 15 to 20% open space.
Go ahead, Ms. Lou.
Something to be worked out in the future. I'm not expecting an answer tonight, but I'm, I'm not real happy with the 15 and the 10% of outdoor amenity space and the 80% maximum impervious. I'm so mean... I'd like to, I guess I need to, I need some help visualizing that, what that would look like if you had a piece of property and you had a commercial building or an industrial building and 80% of it is pervious and 20% of it is impervious and then you have this 10% outdoor amenity space. I'm, I'm, I'm having trouble visualizing it. Maybe you can help me in the future with some pictures.
As an architect, I can say a lot of people have a hard time visualizing it because they're just numbers and it has to do with the quality as much as the quantity.
Right.
So visualizing it, and Ted's, I think in some of these diagrams showing the building typology or the street section is an, is an attempt to try to give a person an understanding of the typology, but it's really what you would perceive from the ground, the spatial characteristics that I think everybody really wants to know.
Right.
Okay.
Is actually more important. So what, I agree with your intuition that 15% is actually not that high of a threshold for the scale of development that's likely to ensue, given this geography and Burlington's development pressures. So I feel the municipality is in more of a driver's seat than in other areas because this is such a valuable site. So asking more, 20% is probably appropriate.
And the industrial building, for some reason, is 10%. So I, I want to discuss those numbers, but I also think I would really benefit and therefore maybe others would benefit from some visual examples of what would this look like?
So Gamble Associates were architects and urban designers. Ted has been working on the zoning. The goal is to actually show how these, how these development pressures and parameters come to ground on a specific geography. And that geography happens to be a portion of the mall where there is both a willing developer and a willing property owner. So the problem is the timing of this, as it needs to go 90 days before the town meeting. It, it may not be possible to provide that visualization, although that would be most effective and most helpful for the developer also who's eager to do some of these things that are being asked for. So it requires either a leap of faith that these numbers are appropriate or a little bit more time to fully evaluate these in real space and real time and in a real place that people know of.
Yeah.
I'm the type of person that sticks a toe in the water for a very long time before I jump in.
Yeah, the leap of faith, I think, is not, is practiced at any planning board, but thank you. Okay, any other questions on the building types and heights and...
Chairman Gaffney?
Yes.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
If there's consensus with the planning board, I would like to explore 20% for outdoor amenity space across the board.
Okay, thank you.
A question on...
Ms. Cavino.
So outdoor amenity isn't necess, so the, the last two columns don't have to add up, in other words, right? So we're not talking pervious, impervious, we're just talking amenity and...
Could be a pickleball court that's impervious.
Yeah, that's right. It could be a plaza, which would be more of a hardscape that's not, not impervious.
Or outdoor amenity space could be rooftop.
It could be.
Oh, or balcony.
It could be.
So then, I mean, I think knowing that you could even use rooftop in appropriate cases, I would agree with seeing it 20% across the board.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
All right, next slide.
Next slide? Yep. We can bypass it. That, that's just sort of a repeat of the previous one. Go to the next slide.
Okay.
This is a, it's a different building typology, but it's the same kind of...
It's the same table, there's nothing different there.
So we also have provisions for additions to existing buildings. We want to make sure they have the opportunity to make the most of their properties if they have a situation where they have excess parking. We would encourage them to, to fill in that with, you know, by street skates and new building, square footage. And so there's different ways that could happen. It could happen, there's a lot of buildings that are set back from the street so there's no opportunity to develop forward and even, I think, second or third floors on some of these properties. So we're trying to make it flexible for people that have existing properties that don't necessarily intend to destroy the model of a building, but want to add to it. Next slide.
Yes, Ms. Lou, please.
So where it says building proportions and facade composition and there's that list, am I, does that mean that we will need to define what is and is not allowed? In other words, blank walls. Who likes a blank wall? Are we talking about not allowing blank walls? What, what are we talking about here? I'm not sure I understand that. Oh, right here.
Well, again, if, if you're building forward, okay, an existing building, we want to make sure that as you do that, that you follow some of those requirements from the other design... design standards. We want transparency as it's, you know, as it's facing the street. So, that would be part of the review process that, that you can go ahead and make the improvements, but we want to make sure that it, it's complimenting the district as far as the overall vibrant destiny.
In what circumstance would we want a blank wall? Is it that we can say you can't have a blank wall? Is that, okay, 'cause that, that would, I would like to hear, but that's not what it looks like to me here on this list. Building transparency, that's a, that's a positive. Parapet wall, that's a positive. Blank wall, that's a negative, so.
There's limitations on blank walls, is what that is. It's not requiring or asking for blank walls, we're just, it's just an.
I assume you wouldn't want that, but.
Yeah, it looks like you.
We'll, we'll clarify that.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay? All right, let's move on. Yep, it's getting there.
Don't want to push it.
There we go.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so this diagram just explains the, the setback permit for, on, on different streets. So, for example, if you're on the Mall Road, a setback from the right-of-way is 30 feet, and at that point, you can have a building that's 55 feet tall, and that provides a good apron that can be used for streetscape improvements, sidewalk improvements, outdoor activities, outdoor dining, displays, that sort of stuff. So, that basically, the taller the building, the further away from the streets it is. So, for example, if you're doing a lab building, you have to be 150 feet away from a street, one of the major streets, in order to place that. So, that would be basically going closer to, to the highway.
Okay.
I have a question, then, how this would work with parking, because this reminds me of in the Third Ave area or the Nordblom property where we had stepped-back height allowances, and it kind of worked against us when we put in Lifetime, because Lifetime wanted this taller building, but they couldn't build it up next to the street, so therefore the parking was in the front. We wanted the parking behind, and we couldn't do that.
Right.
So, how would this work with parking? Because we don't want to have people building, tall buildings set back and then putting parking lots in the front.
No, you don't, wouldn't be allowed to have parking lots in front. So, basically, we're trying to cut a balance so that the building's placed in a way that there's some space in front of it that can be activated with outdoor dining or what have you, but the parking goes behind it. And so, if you take Third Avenue as an example, you know, all that building, the, the hotel, restaurants.
Right, I'm, I'm actually thinking about the Lifetime building.
That's all, that's all close to the street, but, and there's, there's open space in between the buildings, and then behind the building, there's parking that's connected to each other.
Right.
That's really good.
And we like that. What we don't like is what we got at Lifetime. So, where would the, so when you have a taller building that's set back, where is the parking going to be? Because we don't want the parking in front of the building.
So, I think the question is, so if the proposal comes forward and it is just a big tall box, right, what happens to the parking in the location? I, I have a response to that, but I'd like to hear you, Ted, speak to that, because I think that's what we're trying to avoid and make clear from the beginning, that that's not what we want to see.
Well, parking, according to the standards, parking is not allowed in front of the building. The only thing that's allowed in terms of parking in front of the building is if they create a new street and they do onsite, on-street parking.
Okay, so it says, it only, only if it's parallel, only if it's parallel parking?
Fine.
Right.
Thank you, that's what I needed to hear.
Yep, okay. Okay, good.
Okay?
Yep.
And again, going, going back to the, the ground floor limitations, again, it has to be commercial space on the ground level, on the main corridors, and it can be whatever's allowed in that district on the upper floors, including residential. And again, on the left is just an example of, you know, really nice activation of the mall with the, with the outdoor seating and, you know, just really, you know, public art, a nice job with that. And that's really what we'd like to sort of spill, you know, extend on to Mall Road itself over time.
All ready? Next.
Yeah, here's some open space examples right here. So, basically, there's a variety of different open spaces. Typically, what you would see is probably courtyards, areas, you know, for passive recreation, community gardens. You could even have rooftop open spaces as well. So, for all of these different open spaces, there are design standards that are going to be part of this process. And there's also the opportunity for the planning board to work with the developer if they've got another type of open space that they think applies well to their property.
Okay. Thank you.
Next slide. And there are also streetscape standards, which we have actually created sort of four zones. The first one is the activation zone, and that's the area right up against the street. So, that's a 30-foot setback, like it would be on Mall Road. That's an area, an opportunity for outdoor dining, other things, that basically create vibrancy along the corridor. The second space is the utility and furnishing areas. That is where you might have street furniture, you might have lighting that provides light for both sidewalk as well, it's the, the outdoor dining areas. Third area is the pedestrian throughway zone. That's basically a sidewalk or multi-purpose path for, to be clear, for travel in that corridor, on, at least on foot, and maybe even on bike it someday, it'd be wiped it out. And then there's the, the street enhancements zone, which basically is the area, either the, along the curb, and that's wherever you want to see nice street trees, some streetscaping, basically creating separation between the travel lanes and the pedestrians, but also at the same time creating shade and enclosure that makes it more attractive and better.
Okay, next.
Just a breakdown of the different types of streets. You know, the Gateway Boulevard is really the mall and the El Sacks Turnpike, and then there's sort of a hierarchy. So, if you go down, you know, from there, you would go, step down to a collector's street like South Bedford Road, the commercial, oh, back, oh. So, Commercial Street would be like District Avenue, and then the local streets would be, you know, as I mentioned, the, the streets that are integrated throughout the mall property. And each of these have design standards in terms of sidewalks and street trees. So, again, as we, as new development happens, the way they connect to those properties is gonna be, is gonna be standardized in terms of good quality space that provides access for not only vehicles, but for pedestrians.
Member LaRue.
Thank you. I have a, thank you, Mr. Chair, I have a comment and a question. Just because I know the sensitivity of this neighborhood, when we talk about South Bedford Street, we need to be very clear, there are two parts of South Bedford Street. One part of it is purely residential. I don't want people who are listening at home to freak out, thinking that this is going to be their neighborhood. We're talking about the part of South Bedford Street that's from Mall Road.
South, south of Mall Road.
Exactly.
Yep.
So, just for clarification, so people don't get nervous. And then, could you give me an example of what you mean by local street? Where would that be?
Well, let's see, the, the Mall Road access road today, the Mall Access Road today, where they, you know, go down, you know, towards the Macy's property, you know, part of it has, you know, sidewalk and the street trees, and then it sort of fizzles out, but the first part of it would be an example of a local street.
So, within the parcel?
Within the parcel itself.
Thank you.
That's great. Thank you. And my question is, you've probably, for town meeting, you want to call that South Bedford Street, not Road, just for clarification.
That's Melissa's phone.
And, yeah, I call it south of, you want to call that south of the Mall Road, just to be very, very clear.
Yep.
People who lived on the other side would be very upset.
Okay, next. Good, thank you.
And just some other examples of, of activation, everything from outdoor dining, rooftop terraces. I've even been to places where they have, you know, excess parking in garages, and they take the upper level and they create a space out of that. In this case, it's, this is a, a restaurant or a bar that looks out over the skyline of City, and it's really fantastic, actually a great way of using underutilized parking. Anyways, we're trying to provide, you know, good standards, but it's flexible at the same time for people to be creative.
Okay, thank you. Any questions on that? Let's go. Okay, next.
Ted, I think we'll have to wrap up the next couple slides here.
Okay. Well, this is really the last.
Yeah, this is the last one, that's kind of the, one of the most important ones that when we've talked about.
The density.
Right.
Density.
The density slide. So, what we're proposing, you know, by right in terms of residential density is that in townhouses, it would be 15 units per acre, drawing residential units per acre. Multi-family by right would be 20 per acre, and mixed-use would also be 20 per acre. And so, if you're, by special permit, with a public benefit, we'll get to public benefit in a second, we're proposing to go to 35 units per acre for multi-family and for mixed-use buildings. And we've had a lot of discussions over the last year and a half with property owners, with boards and committees and so on, and we try to create a number of them that will make sense and actually lead to reinvestment and new development. If they make it too low by special permit, nothing will happen. And so, we're trying to find that sweet spot where it's, it's a comfortable number and doable in the district, but at the same time, something that has, that will draw more investment. So, that's really one of the key issues that we have to figure out between now and next Tuesday. And I think that's attached to the 35 units per acre is that there's got to be a public benefit improvement. And that could be, you know, making those connections, improvements along the by-bruk. So, for example, with the proposal that they're putting together on Mall, on Macy's parking lot, you know, that's one of the big things that we've been discussing, is can you do a walkway? Can you do like a boardwalk along the, along the, along the bruk that would connect over to the district and ultimately make those connections through the, the overall district itself? And, you know, there's other things that are possible, but that's really the big thing, is creating quality open spaces or improving existing open spaces such as TR, TRW Park or other places that are appropriate in the district or around the district.
Mr. LaRue.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have, just sort of something I think we should think about and consider, talking about incentivizing smaller residential units. I understand the reasons for limiting square footage. I'm a little concerned about the idea of limiting the number of bedrooms. When people start talking about limiting the number of bedrooms, I see that as coded language to say, "We don't want families with children here." And maybe, I'm sure that's not what you intend, but it can be seen that way, and so I, I want us to be careful about that.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes, Mr. Cavino.
An example of 35 units per acre, if I could, from staff, maybe?
So, I believe that that would be like the Lifetime Living is, the Fourth Ave Housing is about 20 units per, or is about 35 units per acre. I also believe that either the Tremont or the Huntington, one of those is actually kind of up there because the lot size is very small, but it was the same height and design as the one next door. So, it's a, it's about, it's like that, to visualize it. It's Lifetime Living, it's the Huntington, it's the Tremont, it's Nordblom.
It's a five-story apartment building.
Yep.
Give me an example of the mixed-use, mixed-use buildings in the Burlington.
We don't have one.
You don't have, okay, 'cause I was.
Do you know where they have some?
Reading Center.
Reading Center, Bedford Center?
I have Reading, I know, on Main Street, you know, like that, okay.
The Archer almost works, the Archer almost works as a mixed-use building, because that first level is, I mean, it's lobby, it's more lobby, conference and restaurant space, but it's active and it's open to the public, and then you have the, well, temporary residential.
Yeah, I'd say any.
But, but I wouldn't use that as an example, though, because the point of the mixed-use is to allow for commercial, since our tax basis is very heavily dependent on commercial. Yes.
Okay, all right, next slide.
So, that's where we, this is the final slide. Or is it?
Just a, just a quick mention, in addition to the, the bylaw itself, we're also providing, putting together some design standards and guidelines that would be part of the planning board rules and regulations. And again, the whole idea with that is that it's just the, the planning board in the review process to make sure you can work with the developers to get a good quality project. You know, all the different items we just talked about, those are, you know, fleshed out and given examples in the design guidelines. That's, again, for the benefit of the planning board when you're talking to developers.
Ted, if I may.
Yep.
The idea is to provide a hand, almost like a handbook, so the planning board can adopt as their rules and regulations, this special kind of design standards for this district, right? And in there has more details and more guidance and to help the planning board, you know, over time, try to be consistent with the development that goes in there.
Question on that.
Mr. Cavino.
Design standards, would they actually be part of the zoning bylaw?
So, it'd be part, yeah, so the site plan review when the project comes through. So, it's referenced in the zoning, in the mixed-use district that we're considering, but then you would look to the rules and regs of the planning board to see that, so that it would be part of.
So, the rules and regs of the planning board would not be part of the zoning bylaw?
That, correct. So, it's a bigger packet of information. It's referenced in the zoning, that you guys have this special handbook, right? It says, "If you're going to build in this mixed-use district, you have a special handbook of design standards," which is a lot of what we went over, and David could probably speak to it a little bit, I don't know if you had.
So, we're almost the same as what we started out to do with the town center, because the designs and the standards are separate, they're not within the zoning bylaw.
That is true.
Referred in the zoning bylaw.
That is true, but those have been problematic for other reasons, and I'm sorry, this is.
Nobody reads them.
No one reads them.
You bring up an important distinction, though, and a lot of people conflate design guidelines with design standards. Design standards are a rule of law. You must do them. A guideline is a may. They're discretionary.
Right.
The challenge is that a lot of developers will think that they're doing them, but they really aren't, and that's where it really requires to be in the bylaw.
Yep.
Okay.
Understood. Anyone else? Okay. The only question I have is, back to the front, there's some, there's a greenway. Would the greenway have your bike slash pedestrian paths in there? The bike, particularly bike conductivity there with the greenway, or is that just green space without the ability to have a bike path there?
Yeah, it has not been designed at this point. So, it does give more flexibility to the developer, that that's part of what we want to see. We've talked about a multi-use path in there, but we haven't designed it to date.
Okay. Thank you. Any other members have any comments? Staff, any further comments?
Not on this. I think that the design rules and regs, I think that they're going to be a little bit different than what we're used to with the, with the town center rules and regs. I think they're going to be more kind of architecturally prescriptive, but not as prescriptive on, you know, colors and that, that type of thing, so.
I think that's a possibility.
Yeah, and so, it's, yeah, so they're more, they're not as, they're, yeah, I feel like the town center leaves a lot open to interpretation, whereas this is a little bit more focused, since the design type, the building type. as the design type, the building type we want. This is the type of demonstration we want to have, you know, so.
Okay. Ms. Luru.
First of all, there was, I want to compliment Melissa and Liz and the rest of Melissa's team because you've done a ton of work on this and it really shows. It's been an enormous amount of work. I know that. I thank you for coming forward with the phased approach. I think that's the right thing to do and I think it's something that town meeting will be more likely to understand and accept. So that's really all I wanted to say.
Okay. Yes, Ms. Sutherland.
Because we'll be continuing this to the next meeting, can we just outline expectations for next meeting on this? Because obviously it's a lot of information.
Lot of information, yeah.
So can we just kind of discuss real quick what your expectations are for July?
So is there, were there a list of questions that, I know that Ms. Luru had said, don't need the answer now, and other folks, I didn't take those down specifically, but maybe go back to the video.
I'd have to watch the video. I don't remember myself all the questions I asked.
Mr. Chair, I have, I know that something was mentioned was the potential for the amount of residential units that could be built, both in this area that, that kind of the small area that we're looking to bring to town meeting this September, as well as then in the future for the full area. Kind of the, I think that you brought up a concern recently, I'm just reading through my notes, about the limiting bedrooms. About that, the 20% outdoor amenity space, I think that we've kind of come to a consensus, I think solidifying that for next meeting. Those are the three that I have right in front of me. I can look.
I would still like some visual assistance in trying to figure out what that would look like, the 80/20, and how you can give examples perhaps.
The other thing too that I mentioned was I would recommend chatting with Conservation Commission to get an understanding of recommended landscaping features as the buffer, if we so choose that.
Okay.
For you, Mr. Chair.
I also, oh, yeah.
Should we schedule, I mean, you know, I don't know your schedule, should we schedule another subcommittee with the planning board?
And just kind of finish those up so we can call it a day and next.
Next, maybe, I don't know.
Ideally, it would be short. Yeah, I mean, I think we had thought maybe doing July 11th. Or is that too early or too late? We could do a subcommittee meeting prior to that. I mean, I think I have some immediate adjustments with, you know, the presentation in terms of limiting blank wall, the auto use. I think we wanted to remove that from this district. Better explanation on transitional buffers, 20% of open space across the board. The visualization on the projects will probably, David's looking at the Macy's site and possibly the Kohl's site. We also have getting the numbers firmed up on that Tremont, on our existing housing, because I know we have it, and then providing housing analysis. And it will be still kind of, what do you call it? Conceptual, because the idea is, and this is kind of built also into the framework, that this is still a commercial dominant corridor. And so we want to really kind of try to keep that 60/40 balance overall. So that, and that's why we have, you know, we've talked to a couple of different, you know, all these property owners pretty much, you know, through every building on here has been, you know, engaged in the stakeholder process. So some of them, you know, are in the retail business, some of them, you know, do not have any interest right now in the residential and vice versa. So we will do our best to kind of lay out what we understand as a phased development based on the information we know now.
And this is discussion, but is there anybody in the audience that wants to comment? Oh, there is, okay. And maybe see if there's anybody seated online that wants to comment on this.
Yeah, and again, for my, for people online, if you do have any input, please use the raise hand function at the bottom of the screen.
Yes, please.
Thank you. Sherry Ellis, Standing Bylaw Review Committee. Just a question for the team, and I didn't, I listened at the land use meeting, signage. It was a question before. I still have the question if this is included or not.
Currently, we do not have design guidelines for the signage.
Okay.
And I know that had been talked about through the community process. So I think it just needs more attention. So I think what we were trying to do is put this forward and then, it's not dropped from the list.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you. Anyone else that's online?
I do not see any hands raised, so I'm going to say no.
Okay, thank you. All right, can I have a motion, please?
Sir Chair, I'd like to make a motion to continue this discussion at the planning board meeting of July 18th, 2024.
Second.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we've got 5-0-0. Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
All right. We have item 6D. That's a request for approval of minor engineering change, 17A Street. Story Heights Montessori is the applicant. And who do you have here for story? Take your seat right there in front. Introduce yourself and give a little background of what's happening for Story Heights Montessori.
Happy to. Tyler Tullis. My wife Crystal and I are the owners of Story Heights Montessori and are looking to bring what would be our fourth campus to, not in Burlington, but to Burlington.
Wow.
Okay. And specifically to the minor engineering change, because this is a by right use, is there some activity doing to the building itself?
Not to the building itself. If you can maybe zoom in on that, that drawing there a little bit. You can see it's, the building is 15 and 17A Street. And it is designed kind of like a bent U. And there's open space in between the two sides of the building. And for our EEC licensing requirements, we have to have outdoor play area for the children. And the minor engineering change is to add a fenced and artificial turfed play area in between the two sides of the building for the play area for the children.
Okay, and so do you have the entire building you're going to be using there?
No, sir. Basically, just the half on the left-hand side of the screen. It's approximately 7,000 square feet.
Okay. Is that a one-story building?
A one-story building, correct.
Okay. And it's just going to be a fenced-in astroturf area right in the middle there?
Fenced-in, yes, sir. The EEC requires a certain amount of square footage per child for outdoor space. It's roughly, for our business model, it's roughly 2,200 square feet. As you can see on the, I guess that would be like a Google Maps picture. There's some already, it's, we call it grass. There's not a ton of grass there right now. It needs some attention. But there is some non-paved area, we'll call it, up against the building that we would, will be including in that 2,200 square feet. And then if you look at the engineer's drawing, there's a, basically a rectangle that would, that would stick out from that area that would be fenced in and would be turfed over for the play area outdoors.
Okay. Great. All right, let's see. We have staff. Any comments on this one?
No, I mean, so we have no concerns, rather. There are some comments. So we did have a great discussion with the applicant, just staff, to go over things. So with any kind of childcare center, you know, we always look at circulation for parents coming in and going out. And so we, besides just, you know, the changing of the play area, we looked at, you know, where parents would be pulling in, dropping off their kids. They're little kids, so they're not walking in on their own. So we talked about that. And I think these spaces that are directly out front, that are angled parking, I think will probably be designated as drop-off spaces so that parents can go in, drop off the kiddo and go to work or wherever they're going.
Correct.
And, you know, just through you, Mr. Chair, if you could talk, kind of talk about your childcare center hours, how many people are working there and all of that.
Absolutely. So our model is one infant classroom, one toddler classroom and one preschool classroom. And so those ratios are two to seven, two teachers to seven infants, two teachers to nine infants, and then two teachers to 20 preschoolers. Those are the EEC ratios. We staff additional teachers, I don't know what the term would be, teachers, assistants, helpers, in those rooms to cover breaks and lunch breaks and to be extra sets of eyes, ears and hands in all of those spaces. So our, at our two current locations, the max staff that we require is 12. We can function anywhere between nine and 12 staff on a site. And so those would be the only full-day people parking on-site. And then the rest would be drop-off and pickup. We do early care that starts at 7:30. And so between 7:30 and nine would be our early care drop-off would be, would be the lowest number of drop-offs, statistically speaking. Regular drop-off starts at nine. Regular pick-off, pickup starts at four. And then late care pickup would end at 5:30 at the very latest. And again, the numbers vary between all of those pickup and drop-off times. But again, the max number of students, I mean, I know a baby, right, a student, the max number of children in the building would be 36. So, you know, again, this is not a huge lift of people. And I should also say that the idea right now is to do the drop-off here at the front of the building. But we would let this be a, maybe trial and error is the best way to describe it, and our director would make that determination. But the proposed primary entrance for, for our kids and our clients would be through this front entrance here, which would be the entrance immediately off of A Street.
Thank you, staff. That's it? Okay, why don't we go to board members? I'll start off to the left with Tony Anne.
I have no questions.
Okay, Ms. Sutherland.
I have one question and a couple of comments. So I'll start with my first question. If you could keep this view up, this is helpful. So where the drop-off is occurring for folks bringing their kids in, will they be walking behind the vehicles to get to the door?
No, probably not, because we will park the staff in the rear of the building. And so this would all be open during pickup and drop-off.
Right, but so let's say a parent pulled up in that blue SUV and they're, or let's say actually the white car, and they're getting their kids out to go to the front entrance, they have to walk behind that blue SUV, correct?
Sidewalk, yeah.
There is only landscaping in front of the blue SUV.
I would say, I mean, that's, it's tough because obviously we want landscaping. But I do have some concerns about especially drop-off. I mean, people are always backing up and.
Sure.
So something to consider there, just.
Most of the parents at our two current locations, just they pull in and then they'll walk their child in.
Yeah.
Very rarely would a parent actually park, get out. And I mean, they have to obviously stop their car, but they're not pulling into a designated spot to walk their child in. So it's kind of a.
Oh, I see what you're saying. So they're normally going to pull up to the door?
Right. Where we are right now, that's why I say there will be some trial and error to this.
So they're not going to park?
The idea is, I see it now, or I should say that better, the idea is our executive director and my wife see it right now. I'm kind of representing the company, representing them. But it's to just, to have the parents pull in, bring the kids in and then leave. And any parent that would need to park would park where our staff would park, which would be in the rear of the building, or along the side of the building as well. I know it's kind of hard to see on the Google map image there, but on the drawing, there are parallel spots along the side of the building, which would probably be best for parents that they wanted to park and come in and had maybe extended conversations that they wanted to have with their teachers.
Okay, that was my first question. And then my other comments, actually, I drive down the street, whether it's to and from baseball fields or whatever. And the landscaping looks great and the trees look great in this picture. It's not how it looks today. There is, and I know you're the tenant, not the owner. However, I would ask that you speak to the owner, because there, especially that one tree in the end is pretty much dead.
Okay.
And it would be nice to have that replaced, so we actually have a nice little tree there. And to talk to the owner to make sure the landscaping front is maintained, because right now it is a little bit of, a little hairy.
Okay.
Looking at it when I drove by today.
It's a perfect time for that comment, because we're in the lease negotiations right now. So, yeah.
If anything you want to do with shrubbery in there, right, those between the trees, some of those shrubs are flowering perhaps, to really, I think, apologize for speaking out of turn typically, but, you know, to kind of enhance your clientele, to make it more festive, I think, probably would benefit to you.
Great, great point.
Yeah, because I mean, I mean, I know Montessori schools, I mean, they're awesome. I'm really excited that this is coming to town. And knowing that the typical clientele that are looking for Montessori schools usually a little more on the privileged end, and so to have an area that kind of speaks that clientele would be great. And then my last comment would just be, obviously, I kind of looked at, you know, your website and all that stuff, and I really loved seeing some of the commentary you had, especially when, I think it was in the letter that you send to potential families about how, you know, important childcare is and what a trying time it's been with the costs. And, you know, as a mom of three, some that, one that's still in daycare, I know that we are in the midst of a childcare crisis.
Correct.
Obviously, not something that you alone can fix or one company can fix. But I think it would be great to see someone set a standard. Obviously, this is something I would never ask of you, but something I would say to consider is as you guys continue to flourish and have great business. You know, you mentioned in the letter how you all look for an opportunity to contribute to nonprofits, but perhaps for the community, consider other options around, you know, once you feel it's appropriate within the business time, is there opportunity to allow for discounted rates for first responders or nurses or, you know, something to really kind of help right now, knowing that the two, especially because Middlesex County is the third most expensive county in the entire United States for infant care, just behind San Fran and Washington DC. That I am just concerned about, you know, where we're headed. And I know in order to fight that is to continue to add places like you all are doing. And so again, I'm thrilled and, you know, not something I would expect, but something I would just ask, because it only takes one person to set the standard.
Sure.
And I would ask this of all childcare facilities in Middlesex County, but you're the one sitting in front of me, so.
Absolutely.
You know, I'll start with you, but I would just kind of put that out there for consideration.
Absolutely. Great idea. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sutherland. Member Luru.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Great idea, Jess. Love that. I was just curious to know, you said this is your fourth facility. Where are the other three?
So our first location was in Norfolk, Mass. We started a second one in Rentham, actually right in the middle of COVID, when the crisis of childcare was at its peak. And then we are in the process of building out our third location right now in Plainville, Mass. And then this would be number four and would, if timing plays out how we think it will, would be early next year. So by the time the tenant improvements are done and the space is modified to meet licensing requirements.
Okay, thank you. That was my other question.
Thank you, Mr. Cavino. Thank you very much. Okay. And if no other questions?
I'm sure you'll have a wait list very soon. I would like, I would like to make a motion to approve the request of a minor engineering change for property located at 17A Street to remove four parking spaces for the installation of a new fenced-in astroturf play area, as reflected on the red line plan entitled Plan of Land 15 to 17A Street, Burlington, Mass, prepared by.
Gruier?
Yeah, it's.
In Hounen Inc., dated.
Dale, I think, was on the call at some point. He might help you with the.
Sorry if I butchered the name. May 23rd, 2024, and revised to June 11th, 2024, consisting of one sheet, subject to the following provisions, terms and conditions attached.
As amended.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. Motion's in seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? 5-0-0. Thank you. Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Okay. Matters of appointment?
Mr. Chair, I would like to make a motion to take item 7A, 7B and 7C together for discussion purposes.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? 5-0-0. Okay, this is going to be, let me see, this was seven? Yep. 7A is a public hearing for the application approval for a special permit pursuant to 7.2.5 parking reduction methods of the zoning bylaws. 101 Middlesex Turnpike, Brixmore Property Group is the applicant. 7B is a continued public hearing. Oh, so that was a new public hearing. The 7B is a continued public hearing for the application approval of a special permit pursuant to 4.2.6.9 fast food establishments of the zoning bylaws. 101 Middlesex Turnpike, Tate Holdings LLC is the applicant. And continued discussion for 7C is a request for approval of a minor engineering change. 101 Middlesex Turnpike, Brixmore Property Group is the applicant. Okay, staff. If you're ready. If you're ready?
Yes. So this has been quite a back and forth. There's been a lot of people involved and I'm really happy to be here with all the decisions drafted and we're, we're finally kind of getting to the home stretch. So we're really excited about, um, the tenant Tate and potential new tenants that are coming in. And so, um, but one of the things that, um, you know, we are concerned about is that, you know, this, it's a tight space. This is a really, really tough site. The topography is really tough here. And so they are, um, there is a request for, um, for reduction in parking. And so one of the things that I've spoken with the applicant about and, um, through their attorney is to definitely that, you know, should this go through, that we would need a, a parking analysis, um, done six to 12 months after, um, after the second restaurant, second to be named restaurant opens, um, at 101 Middlesex Turnpike. And also, um, one of the other things that we wanted to, um, that we were really talking about was, um, the connection to, um, the, the crosswalk at Middlesex Turnpike and Mall Road. And so, um, we are requiring on the property to give us 20% engineer design plans, um, which, you know, engineering, we're going to want to see landscape, some landscape and landscape architect, um, for that. So, um, I, you know, I've also asked them to do a little bit of, because there are going to be more restaurants in here and they are the highest parking ratio at, um, one space for three seats, um, is to reduce the number of parkings, uh, reduce the number of seats. So they originally had kind of an extra 30 seats as a buffer so that they could potentially, you know, add, but, um, I, you know, I've asked that, um, Bricksmore kind of just eliminate that because we're, they're so tight. And then also Tate, um, they wanted an additional 36 patio seats. But I think that again, with the tightness of the parking, um, it, it's going to be, it's going to be pretty hairy. So we've asked that they reduce that. One of the things that's, that's tough here is that we see the restaurants, so we, we see the, the seats and we can see the parking there, but, you know, we have, um, a lot of retail in here that's appointment only, which is great. And, you know, week time, weekday traffic in there is, um, is low and people come and they do their appointments. But if we get something, if the property owner gets, you know, an amazing tenant to go in where Golf Galaxy was, or Staples decides to move and something else really exciting goes in, you know, if it's retail to retail, we can't see it or we don't, we don't see it. So, um, you know, I, I don't want it to become a, a parking circus down there. And so I want to be able to, um, give them kind of enough, enough wiggle room to make it really work, really be vibrant. You know, I'm so excited, Mills, Hilton, and Topless is so excited that the amount of investment that's happening here is so amazing. Um, and it's going to be a catalyst for this, this whole plaza, what they're doing. But we just want to make sure that, um, it doesn't, it doesn't turn into a traffic thing over there.
Yeah.
That's all I have to say, um, but, um, you know.
Okay. Will let the applicant, uh, comment on, on that as well?
Sure. For the record, attorney Mark Vaughn with Reiman Bronstein representing the applicant. Here with Lisa Juan, who's a traffic engineer with, uh, Kimbley Horn that put together the, uh, shared parking memo and the methodology that was submitted. And I do want to thank Liz for all of her time and the back and forth that she alluded to. It's been, uh, you know, considerable over the past couple of months and Caleb as well. So, yeah, we, we really are trying to strike the right balance in terms of utilizing the, the bylaw that was obviously passed by town meeting and at the, um, you know, the direction of the planning staff and the planning board to, uh, utilize kind of a complimentary nature of parking that's out there. I think, you know, perfect example being that, you know, rather than counting every single use as if someone's driving, um, and, and making individual trips and acknowledgement that there is complimentary parking that happens where someone that is going to a retail store may also be popping in to grab something to eat or vice versa, or maybe in fact doing, you know, multiple trips. So I know Lisa is, you know, did put together a thoughtful memorandum that, uh, kind of walked through and addressed that and something that we're, um, you know, comfortable with in terms of the, the overall numbers that we, we have in there. Um, you know, we are looking at the restaurant seats. I think as the board knows, you know, even though I think is it 75 of our overall seats are, um, seasonal patio seats, nonetheless, we have to look at those as being a full seat for the purposes of the parking, right? Which we, which we've done, but obviously those are only going to be utilized for certain portions of the year. So, um, you know, we kind of, well, Lisa, do you want to maybe hit the, the high notes of it or, um, that'd be helpful? Yeah, okay.
Sounds good. Thank you very much. So for our parking observations, thank you, Liz. We, we did two additional counts just recently in June. School's still in session. We did one on a Wednesday and a Thursday. Still, the parking utilization, it was about, you know, 45% or 37%. So like less than 50% of the parking, it was not occupied. So we did those additional counts because our original parking observation was done in December on a Saturday. So we just did one on a weekday as well. If you guys did read the histor, if you guys did take a look at the memo, we did provide some historical data and we use near map, but looking at the 2015, 2017, 2019 data points, the surface parking lot, it is underutilized and it is consistent with what we have been doing with the parking observation. Of course, with the redevelopment, there will be more parking demand. So that's why we did the ITE, the parking generation, really understanding what's the demand for each of these different land uses. What's really powerful is going to be the time of day distribution. So there's two different ones. One is on figure seven and figure eight, which is on page 11. Figure seven is the weekday and then the figure eight is going to be on a Saturday. What we see here is that the different land uses are going to have different peak periods. And if you look at figure seven, it doesn't hit the peak of the provided parking. The peak is at 294. That's just assuming at noon, at noon, that is the peak that it would occur with these different land uses. Similarly, with the Saturday, also noon is when the peak actually occurs, which would mean that 305 parking spaces would be occupied, but it doesn't hit the provided parking of Again, we did mention that it is going to be a request for reduction in parking, but based on the parking observation, historical data, the, the parking demand and really not having like a sea of asphalt parking, we do feel comfortable that the amount of parking spaces being recommended should be sufficient.
And that's how many spaces?
Eighty-eight.
Yeah.
Uh, how many parking spaces?
Yes, 314.
Three, 314?
314, yes.
314, yeah. You know, what's interesting is that, you know, if you look at the, the staples in and of itself, right? Technically, it says that Staples would require 76 parking spaces under the bylaw, right? I've been there, but I don't think I've ever seen more than eight to 10 people that are actually parked there, right?
That's true.
So, you know, we're trying to strike the right balance to Lisa's point of, you know, not providing too much pavement, uh, but also acknowledging the, the complimentary and, uh, off-peak time of some of this.
So I would just say that, uh, the only time I've seen probably more packed is during Christmas, but that's everywhere, right? You know, Staples getting in their scotch tape and whatever they have to do. So, uh, thank you. Thank you for that. Board members, why don't we go over, back over to, uh, Mr. Cavino? Do you have any questions?
I noticed there's a provision in the, in the draft motion to do a parking study after the second restaurant. Is that, is that correct?
That's what I would like to, that's what I...
So procedurally, okay, so there, so the second restaurant goes in and it's even more popular than the first restaurant. And if, and there becomes a need for additional parking, Liz, uh, what, what would you envision them doing?
So this was, it comes from a previous condition that was, that was, that was approved by you guys. So basically what, what happens is that, um, you know, in the event the parking occupancy is more than 10% over the projected numbers, um, the applicant, property owner shall consult, you got to consult with me, planning director, traffic safety officer, town manager to discuss solutions to mitigate the, um, the effects.
Do you, do you see there, what, what would, what could the solutions be?
They would probably need to come up with a parking agreement with the neighbor, figure out how to park employees somewhere else, um, institute, you know, they would, they would need to, they would need to come to us and...
Could it be as extreme as reducing the number of seats in restaurants?
Um, I don't think we can do that post-approval.
So we have to make sure that we're close pre?
Yes.
And then work with them.
Really? I don't think, there hasn't really been, to my knowledge, two very popular restaurants in that, or two restaurants which we anticipate being very popular in that, uh, location.
Watch out now, or?
This one? Yeah. Get what you asked for.
Yeah, which is great, but, but if it, if it becomes a, a parking time where nobody's going to be able to, either the restaurants or...
And the valet?
The town, nobody.
No, no valet there.
Yeah, no, I don't think these types of, uh, these two restaurants are not a valet-oriented, but, um, you, you know, I think that, you know, look, I, I think it behooves, you know, the property owner certainly is making a significant investment here. They want to, they would be going forward with, and I know we have Representative Bricksmore that's, that's participating here tonight. Mark Newman, by the way, who has been at the prior meetings, is not available, but Ryan is here. So, I mean, they wouldn't be embarking upon this unless they were comfortable that the parking was going to work. And I know, uh, Representative Tate is, is on as well. I mean, I, I think the board does have the ultimate control in that future tenants, should there be turnover of other restaurants that are there or, you know, another restaurant that wanted to, those are all special permit requirements that, you know, would need to come before the, the planning board, um, for that, but...
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm assured that, uh, number one, the restaurants aren't going to operate unless there's enough parking. They'll complain to the landlord. I just was curious as to what the solution might be if there wasn't.
Yeah. Thank you, Member LaRue.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Am I correct in understanding that the 314 parking spaces are exclusive of the parking spaces that are where Staples is? It does not include those spaces?
No, it, it includes, yeah, it includes that...
Okay, because my concern then is that piece of property has just been rezoned and BTA communities, it could become housing and those parking spaces could go away. So how many parking spaces are there?
Well, if, if, if anything's done there, it would need to, you know, get approved. But, I mean, we're relying upon those parking spaces to satisfy our overall requirements. So, I mean, we're, we're, we would have to have a minimum of 314 should you approve the special permit as we're requesting.
And how many of those 314 are on the Staples property, which you do not control?
No, we, we do control.
Do they do? Oh, okay. You do control it.
We, we own the Staples and the Staples is also...
I still would like to know how many parking spaces are on the 75?
Isn't that what you said, 75?
Um, well, that's how many are required. I'm trying to find a...
Okay.
Yeah, that's what's required.
So you still, you see where I'm going with this? Now, the fact that it's one property owner, that helps.
Yeah.
Um, makes me a little concerned and sad because we did hope to see that property get redeveloped into MBTA community housing. And I'm concerned that by putting these restaurants in there, we now have excluded that possibility.
Well, maybe they'll kill two birds with one stone. They can walk to the restaurant.
Yeah, well, I mean...
Seventy-five parking spaces going away.
Not to drop your bar, was that if, if Staples were to go away, so goes away the need for 75 parking spaces.
Right, but the parking spaces might be replaced by townhouses that, or I don't know what will happen there. So I'm, I, I'm concerned. The fact that it's one owner helps because it may restrict what that owner is allowed to do with the property. So I think he, the owner is probably aware of that, but I think it should be set. When the second restaurant who has yet to be, which has yet to be named comes in, will they be coming before us again? Okay, so we can address pickup spots at that time?
We can address it through you, Mr. Chair. I think that it was, the intention was to also kind of talk about not just the parking, but also the, the, um, the minor engineering changes, like the site plan changes that they are proposing.
Then I would suggest that we would condition that the pickup spaces for any, either of these restaurants be those that are adjacent to the crosswalk, which is interior, not right at the entrance.
I thought you said that last time.
We did, we did relocate those.
You did?
Yes.
Thank you.
I can pull up the plan that shows that, too.
No, no, I, I believe you. That's fine. Those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Sutherland.
Um, just to kind of add on to Ernie's point, um, about like what would our options be if, you know, both are very popular and let's say something else comes in and there is extremely popular, no matter what it is? There is also though, the neighbor where the Wendy's in Duluth is, correct? So something could possibly be worked out with them if we foresee future issues, right?
So I, um, yes. Well, I've been told that the, um, parking ratio, that like they don't have a ton of extra spaces.
Okay, so they're already pretty utilized?
I don't know what the utilization, but for our bylaw, so what's required of our bylaw, they do not have an excess of parking.
Okay.
By, to me, you know.
Yeah, I think, uh, I'm sorry.
That's all.
Okay, go ahead.
No, I was just going to echo what Liz said. I think from a zoning perspective, they may not have a lot of excess parking, but from a practical perspective, if you've been down there, I, I've never seen the lot full, even when it was humming with, oh God, I'm dating myself, but was it like Newbury Comics and Dunkin' Donuts there?
Spin and...
You don't know what's going to go in there in the future.
Um, and I believe we had talked about last time, too. I don't know if it was updated on the plan. I didn't get a peek at it. The cross, like a raised crosswalk near where the crosswalk currently is.
Yeah, we, we can speak to that. We, we do have our civil engineer participating. Peter is on. I, I know that that comment had come up. It's something that we had looked at. There are some engineering issues that are relevant in terms of being able to raise that crosswalk because you'd have to raise the adjacent sidewalks that connect to it as well. But we have incorporated, um, kind of four-way, the stop signs that are going to be very visible as you approach. So to the extent that, you know, traffic calming purposes, there's going to be actually a full stop sign there requiring people to stop as they approach the, the crosswalk. I can, Peter, expand on that if, if need be.
So is that a no then for the raised crosswalk?
I, Peter, do you want to maybe address what?
And I'll tell you why my concern is that, because, you know, and you're familiar with the local scene there. If you're coming up Middlesex Turnpike and, and the restaurant to be named later has a lot of pickup, right? Based on our experience with the next door neighbor there, next town over. So we, those particular, um, folks that are doing the pickups, um, are, tend to be aggressive drivers, right? And not necessarily knowing the local flavor, in my opinion. So what, what, and this is to protect them with the raised crosswalk, that the stop signs, they may or may not stop there. But with the raised crosswalk, that will actually slow them down and then that enables the other ones that are picking up to be able to safely cross. So they're actually helping themselves up with the raised crosswalk there, you know, from a safety standpoint. So I, I think that's really important, but you can have your civil engineer talk about if that's going to happen or if it's not going to happen.
Peter, you should, are you able to unmute? There should be requests on your screen that you should be able to click.
He's frozen.
Peter, are you there?
Is he frozen up there?
You can't come off mute pieces.
All right, let's try.
He said he'll drop off and try again.
Okay, all right, Tony, in?
I had one question, we talked about the flood issue down there with all the water.
Yeah.
Did that get resolved? What they were going to do with the water?
It did, I don't think you were here that, it might have been the meeting that...
Oh, that I missed, sorry.
So, yeah, 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 so we did end up getting that resolved, it was approved by the Conservation Commission, and that was actually a separate minor engineering change, so we are going to be implementing, raising that parking and doing the compensatory flood storage, so...
Okay. And I'll comment, so I guess, yeah, my hot button here is that crosswalk, and I appreciate the four-way stop, but I think if it's raised, I think that's going to be the solution to that. We did move it up from just coming into the, into the entrance of there, but I think, again, with my experience with the restaurant to be named later and the high volume of pickup that will happen there, I think from a safety standpoint, I think we really need that calming more than just a sign. So, is that Peter Patrice, he's coming up again? Let me try him again, there. There he goes, yep, just, he might have gone off again.
Okay.
If not, would it be okay if we called him? Or would he...
He can call into the webex.
Yep.
Okay.
Peter, won't you call in? Yeah, please, thanks.
I'll do it, I'll send up the phone number.
Okay, as we do, as we do that, we do have these, these two special permits, right?
Yep, so we have the site, the special permit for parking, but we also have the special permit for Tate.
So that will require how many votes here for the special permit?
All five votes, but I...
And for the, and for the, and minor engineering change, right, that's different?
That's four, I think.
Okay, needs four?
Yeah.
So just to let the applicant know that it needs all five of both special permits here, since we are missing two folks, so when that time comes, if you want to continue or, you know...
Peter, one last thing, that you were just made a co-host on this, so you should be able to unmute yourself if you want to try that, if that maybe will work, before you try calling in.
He doesn't have the special one, so...
Oh. Tell him to try a meeting again.
Let's see, I got a call, is there none?
It might, it might move us to have Tate at their presentation moment.
They have presentation? How many, how many slides they have for Tate presentation?
Well, I don't think we have much of a presentation, we kind of went through it before.
Yeah, so you guys are all set.
Yeah, but I, we do have Brendan Boyle, who is with Tate, that's on as well, hi, Brendan. I know you had an opportunity to discuss Tate and their menu and all that, but certainly here to answer any questions, but...
I could probably do a good a presentation, Brendan, myself being a big fan of Tate, and it's sort of a, they'll have delicious pastries in the lunch and dinners, more of a Mediterranean-style, fast casual is what I'm saying, and Brendan, if I have that, you can add to that.
In the old days, we used to get samples.
Well...
Oh, I like that.
But I think it's going to be very, and that's why our concern is here, I think it's going to be very popular as well as the restaurant to be named later, so we're going to actually have two very popular restaurants, and I think there's going to be a lot of foot traffic coming down from, you know, the third ave area where they have the residences for those folks that will be enjoying this, so that's why I think the cross, the crosswalk, and I think the sidewalk is very, very important.
Otherwise, how do they get into the property?
They're going to have to...
They have to walk all the way down?
Yeah.
They're going to come all the way down and then over.
Wow.
They'd have to go down all road.
Past, right.
There's no, yeah, there's no side, there's no sidewalk on Middlesex in front of that.
So that's what we're trying to ask for.
That's what I'm worried about.
And then they'd have to go the other side.
So they're going to be kind of across the grass anyway.
Or they could just roll down the hill.
So what will happen is they'll naturally create a path over the next six to 12 months, and then we'll figure out if we just put the sidewalk right in there.
Right, necessity to mother of...
So is he calling the webex?
Yes, that's correct.
He's calling in, but he's automatically muted, as he used...
All right, well, maybe...
Is there any way to, like, phone, do it that way?
Could we try, if he calls, this phone right here, and he's able to speak?
I don't know if that's, we can do that.
It's not, it's not public, like, it's not...
Okay, so if, well, let's, let's do this, I mean, if, if the raised sidewalk is a no, then I'll, we can do it that way, if it's a yes, then we'll just condition it and move on. So, do you know that from?
Well, I, all I can tell you is what I spoke to Peter...
He might be there.
Oh, he's unmuted.
Can you guys hear me?
Yeah, hey, you're great, thank you. Go ahead, Peter.
I'm very, it wouldn't let me speak through my computer, but if you guys can hear me clearly, I can kind of give my perspective on the raised crosswalk, if that's okay.
Yes.
Yes, please.
Okay, so the raised crosswalk, we looked into it, and of course, we agree that would be a fantastic traffic calming measure because it forces vehicles to slow down when proceeding towards it. However, from a grading standpoint, with how the expect grades are, would require more disturbance around this area than what we're proposing, as well as changing how we approach the ADA design overall. So, we proposed it now with the protective curb around the engraved crosswalk, as well as having a stop surrounding this area, we feel that it's enough to add, I'm talking measures in this area, and that, and that would be needed, would it change how all the entrances are, the existing parking lot as well, so there would be, it would be a much larger area lift than simply just raising that one area, unfortunately, and I'd be it working too well from the ADA perspective.
So I'm not sure I got all of that, so it's a no, I'm guessing, right?
Yeah.
So, okay.
What is he proposing instead?
Stop signs?
A four-way stop sign.
That's it?
Yep, that you can see.
Maybe even a cobblestone or something across there?
Well, it will be a textured stamped asphalt that's there to provide context that it's a crosswalk, in terms of making it clear to people that...
So here's... Did you understand why they, because I didn't understand everything he said, I couldn't hear at all, why they can't do the raised crosswalk? I didn't get that.
Could you... Sorry, am I coming through a bit more clear now?
Yeah, maybe if you could speak a little, a little louder, Peter, and more direct into the phone.
Okay, how is this for volume right now?
It's better, yeah, go ahead.
Okay, apologies, so with the raised crosswalk, our reasoning on why it wouldn't be feasible at this site, albeit it being a good traffic calming measure, would be that due to the grading needed from an ADA perspective, it wouldn't allow for good ADA circulation in this area, it would require us to change that approach for the site beyond what's currently shown now.
I'm not sure I...
It's the ADA, but like...
Oh, let me, just go to the staff first, go ahead, staff.
From what we understood, it's the grading for the ADA accessibility.
Not possible, or is it difficult?
Yeah, there's a difference. It's more disturbance, Peter, can you, can you explain a little bit why it's more difficult to do?
Absolutely, so right now, we're currently showing, so if we're looking from plan, right, we have the crosswalk, which is on grade of the parking lot, which then lends into a, we have a detectable warning surface with the concrete sidewalk, which is also on grade, which is protected by the raised granite curb, and that allows us to have the ADA path throughout the parking lot, which then continues to the crosswalk that gets you from the center of the driveway to the proposed patio and building area. And if we were to raise that stamped crosswalk area, it would require us to raid everything else, unless we did ramps, but we don't have enough run to get a good landing space in that very tiny landscaped area to have it to be ADA compliant.
Mr. Chair, I think that what he's trying to say is that this area, if you see where the mouse is, this is at grade with the sidewalk, so there's no ramps here, this, this area that is landscaped area is raised up, is that, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so that is why if they were to put ramps here to make it all one, it would, it would be more difficult, I guess.
For the ADAs.
For the, from an ADA standpoint, right.
Difficult to make it ADA compliant, or difficult for the person who's trying to get across?
I think for me, to meet compliance standards for ADA Massachusetts architectural access.
Difficult, but not impossible.
I, you know, I don't, I am not an engineer, that's what I'm, that's, but basically that that area in the, in the landscaped area, the grassed area, is at grade when the sidewalk is.
What's the compromise?
Yeah, good idea, yeah. Yeah, and, and, wouldn't mind talking to that, but I, I'm thinking as, as I even think about the site and what, what the practice will be with the folks that are getting the short-term over to the restaurant to be named later, because I don't think you'll see a lot of that at Tate, there's not a ton of pickup there, at least my experience, but there is some. But on the right-hand side, where we're going to have those pick, short-term parkings, is there, is there currently a fence there? And what I'm thinking is, is to put a fence there because what the, what the folks that are doing the short-term pickup are, are going to go jump right across the grass and...
Yeah, so they can't run across in the wrong place.
At least give them, give them, they'll have to jump it, we'll give them, it could be like a four-footer, just to say, hey, don't be stupid and cross it, because they, they won't have the local knowledge that people coming, Middlesex Turnpike, a fat clip, and just turning, and they're not going to anticipate people crossing at that point.
That might be good compromise.
Then the fence would probably have to come all the way to the entrance.
It would probably have to, yeah, I would say pretty close, just at least those four, so they're not going around the inside, oh, because the door for the restaurants.
The restaurant which has yet to be named is going to be close to the entrance.
On that side of it, right, yeah, right, have to go all the way down.
So I think the fence is a great idea, because even if it's, like you said, a three- or four-foot fence, people, they see it, they know, they're making a conscious decision, I'm going to climb over this fence, and they realize it's there for a reason.
Yeah.
And most people don't do that.
Okay.
The other thing I thought maybe we could consider, since it sounds like the raised sidewalk is very difficult, shall we say, if not impossible, very difficult, could we maybe put in some of those little flasher things so that when somebody steps into the crosswalk, you know how they have that done? Where is it? We have that at...
Across from Mercedes.
Yeah, pedestrian beacons, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah.
As a, that way, you wouldn't have to change the grade, but it still is something that alerts the drivers.
Continuously flashing them.
Well, yeah, continuously, at the bottom of Peachtree, there's a continuing flashing stop sign, if you've been down there recently.
Oh, really?
I, I would say probably, let's not do that.
No, I don't want continuous.
No, I mean, there'll always be somebody in the crosswalk, so it may be continuous flashing, you know what I'm, that's what I'm saying, so if it, and if it's continuous, then it doesn't...
Then it doesn't matter.
It comes back.
That's right, yeah, right, right, so pedestrian activated, yes.
We do have, our representative, the property owner does have their hand raised.
Okay, great.
You requested unmute, are you able to see it, Ryan?
Go ahead.
On your screen? Not unmuted, do you see a request on your screen now? Nope, we can't hear you.
Okay.
Can you use the call-in number to...
Maybe we should.
Again, may put something in the comments, that would work, too.
What? Oh, yeah.
So, I don't know why this isn't allowing, allowing anybody to unmute, only thing I can figure is that we probably need to get off and get back on.
Yeah, right.
No.
But we can't do that because it's recorded, it's...
So maybe you can type something in the comments section, if that's something that they would be interested in.
Oh, he just, he put in the comments, keep it going, happy to look at a small barrier in the landscape.
Perfect, yeah.
And that's from, that's from property owner, thank you, Ryan.
Thank you, yeah.
People, so is that?
Yes. Yep, thank you, and then the pedestrian-activated crossing, is that, yes?
I don't know about that, I mean, I was just talking to Lisa about that, I'm not sure how appropriate in this setting it would be to have that, but...
Especially because this is more of like a driveway, it's not along a local roadway that you're stopping traffic in all directions, but Peter did explain that the intersection, the pavers are red, they're going to stand out of it, yes, everybody should adhere to four-way stop control, it's very difficult to enforce human behavior. Yes, we could, you know, have physical barriers, but everybody's going to take the shortest path at the end of the day, that's just human behavior, but, you know, having the four-way stop control, having the intersections, that is, that's going to stand out, that, okay, this is a special type of intersection because it has pavers, it is going to bring some awareness.
Yeah, well, I mean, we're going to see them six to 12 months afterwards, and if we, if there's, you know, accidents happen there with pedestrians.
Um, Mr. Chair, would you feel comfortable, or I would like to suggest that the fence or physical barrier, or whatever you want to call it, is something that would have to be approved by staff and chair?
Okay.
Because I want it to be, you know, not like a post and rail thing, that people can easily jump, not a six-foot-high fence, something in between that at least is a little uncomfortable to get over.
Yeah.
Let's try.
Okay.
Sharp, pointy things.
Sharp, pointy things. Okay, any other staff members to comment? We're okay with not raised, no blinking light, but just with that barrier that will be, to be determined later?
The barrier.
I think, I think we're going to get there, and have successful for both restaurants, particularly the one to be named later with the, with the lot of pickups there. Okay? All right.
One more.
Please, staff.
Couple of things that I want to make sure is on the public record, that, you know, I did speak to attorney Mark Vaughn about the, the need to do a parking report submission, so, and then also the 20% design, so I would like to bond for those, to make sure that we have, that those, that we have, that those happen, so I think we should, we need to figure out later on, you know, if whatever happens, to bond for those so that we can have that, that assurance that those will be, that those will be met. And then, one thing that I was contemplating, and, you know, is, you know, basically, this parking reduction, you know, is really based upon the current tenant mix, really, really, really based on the current tenant mix.
Right.
And so, you know, if the tenant mix is altered, where the required parking is greater than, you know, 433, you know, the applicant should, needs to come back to amend the special permit.
Yep, absolutely. Do you, I don't know if you want to use the...
Oh, sorry, so I just wanted to, you know, I don't, I want to make sure everybody can hear me on that. Basically, you know, we, you know, we're going by percentages, so they're looking for a 27.5 percentage reduction, you know, I'm requesting that they remove some seats to...
I think that's, that's done, right?
So, you know, I don't think it's 27, I don't know what the percentage is, I'm going to, we're going to work that out, but, you know, the parking memo is really awesome, like, the data was great that you guys did, and I know I kept, I kept giving you more to do, but thank you. But, you know, we have kind of a tenant mix where you kind of have retail and commercial space, which is one space for every, four space for every thousand, and then, you know, the restaurant parking, so whatever the percentage is of those in the overall plaza, so you have your restaurant percentage and...
If it changes, they, in any case, anyone should have to come.
Yes, and so, so if, you know, because we don't see, if it's retail to retail, we can't...
So if Golf Galaxy gets replaced by, I don't know, think of something very popular, Dick's Sporting Goods or something like that, that's a different, it's a whole animal.
Or Netflix House or something.
It's not that big, though, like a Dick's.
Because the parking reduction, we are approving for the property owner, for... Because the parking reduction we are approving for the property owner versus these other ones are very specific to
The tenant.
The tenant.
Correct.
Special permit is for the tenant, yeah. Second special permit, that's correct.
Yeah.
Then the minor engineering change is for the entire...
So, Mr. Chair, if I may, so it's definitely only a maximum of 154 seats, correct? This way it's phrased here, it says you feel that's appropriate. I'm, I think we're saying that's it.
Okay.
And I think also the property owner should understand that we're very excited about these restaurants coming in, but this will restrict what you can do with the rest of your property from this point forward, and that should be understood.
Yeah, no, I think they...
If it requires more parking.
Right.
Yes.
Yeah, I think they understand that if they have a retail space currently and there's a restaurant that wants to come in, they would need to get a special permit. We'd be back before the board. I think if it's a, if it's trading retail for retail, I think that there needs to be kind of a common sense, practical analysis done by the property owner that, you know, look, we can't put someone in there that is going to create a parking problem or issue in terms of...
That could be a problem.
And I think they understand that, yeah.
Okay, all right. Looks like Peter's nodding. So this is a public hearing. Is there anyone out in the public world out there, or is no one here? So that's what you... Nope.
Hello?
Okay, that being said, we'll close the public hearing. Can I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing on these matters. Second?
Okay, motion is seconded. All there in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Five zero zero. Thank you. All right. Is there another motion?
Yep. Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the request of Brixmore Property Group for a special permit pursuant to Section 7.2.5 Parking Reduction Methods of the Zoning Bylaw of the Town of Burlington to permit a reduction of the required parking by more than 10% at 91, 101, and 111 Middlesex Turnpike, subject to the terms and conditions contained in Exhibit A attached and as amended. Second?
Okay, motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Five zero zero.
Before I read this next permit, so just for the public record, we've made it clear that we're only allowing 154 seats.
That is what we have drafted in our, in our, in the special permit.
Okay.
Okay.
I think in an ideal world, if it turns out that after we do the six-month or the 12-month, whatever you have in there, that it could support more, we'd like the opportunity to be able to consider more, but...
You're always welcome to come back.
Yeah, we can always discuss at that point.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the request of Tate Holdings LLC for a special permit pursuant to Section 4.2.6.9 Fast Order Food of the Town of Burlington zoning bylaws to permit the operation of a fast casual restaurant in a portion of the existing building at 101 Middlesex Turnpike, subject to the terms and conditions contained in Exhibit B attached and as amended. Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Five zero zero.
Very excited for Tate. I just have to say, my husband made a comment the other day, because he works in one PO square in Boston, and he said, "For all the food I used to purposely eat when I was in Boston," he said, "I can now just get in the town I live in."
There you go.
Between Taco, Tate, to be determined, next one.
Tell him to watch his waistline, though, right?
Yeah, exactly. So, very excited. Anyways, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the request of Brixmore Property Group, property owner, for approval of a minor engineering change for property located 101 Middlesex Turnpike premises to permit a series of site and building facade enhancements as reflected on the site plan entitled amended site plans for Burlington Square Shopping Plaza, 101 Middlesex Turnpike, Burlington, Massachusetts 01803, prepared by Kim Lee Horn, dated April 4, 2024, and revised to May 8, 2024, consisting of 15 sheets and a parking memorandum, subject Burlington Square redevelopment parking analysis study, prepared by Kim Lee Horn, dated March 22, 2024, and revised to June 20, 2024, consisting of 16 sheets, a rendering set entitled Burlington Square, prepared by HFA-AE Limited, received June 6, 2024, consisting of six sheets, and a lighting materials listing, received June 6, 2024, consisting of two sheets, subject to the following revisions, terms, and conditions as amended and attached?
Yeah, as amended. No, it's
As amended.
In your staff report, not attached.
Oh, okay, amended. I don't have to list, go through all this.
Is there a second?
Go through it.
Quick question before I second?
Of course.
Do we have the no, no temporary signs in here?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Then I second.
Okay, and you'll be watching out for those. So it's a motion is seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Five zero zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Look forward to it.
Did you vote on the Tate special permit at all?
We did.
Yes.
Okay, all right. I just kind of... you guys are moving quickly. I was just trying...
Yeah, I made the comment after the Tate special permit approval.
All right.
Probably as fast as Brenda, but...
Yeah, yeah. Appreciate all your time.
And the anticipated Tate based with this approval? Do you have any idea of that?
I do not, and I don't know if Brendan can speak, but
Probably can't.
I know he can speak, but I, my understanding is that they're looking to get going relatively soon. I would suspect that it's probably going to be sometime in late fall, if I had a guess, but I'll...
I will say that, you can see up there, Brendan did put in the chat, "Thank you all. We are thrilled to be coming to Burlington." And I think I see him typing out the answer to an estimated time at least of...
And I could be way off, so I'm...
Yeah. So I see him typing. I think that's what he's doing. I'll just give it a second. Yep, he's smiling, so I think I'm right.
Okay.
Okay.
Yay.
We hope to submit for a building permit in the next couple of weeks, and then we'll begin construction when the landlord has prepared the space for us.
Perfect, okay.
Great.
Looking forward to it. Thank you, Brendan.
Congratulations. Welcome to Burlington.
Okay.
Thank you all, all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is Caleb. Thanks, Mark.
All right. And let's go. No minutes. Other matters for discussion? The first one up is the middle housing subcommittee report. I know there was a meeting. Do we have, Ms. LaRue, you want to talk about that?
There was a meeting. We had a great meeting. I thought it went really well. And I'm trying to remember, there was something Liz was working on.
I'm supposed to be... oh, I can't... I'm supposed to do something.
I forgot my action list.
Yeah.
What the subcommittee discussed was
Let me get it.
The definition, and then how we wanted to move forward with three very targeted areas, and that we would probably move forward with that in January.
Okay, great.
And we had two very interesting...
Yes. We had, like, members of the public came.
Fantastic.
Wonderful.
Fantastic. I know it is a hot, I mean, based off of the MBTA community's discussion, there was a lot of interested folks there as well, law and town meeting members, general public, so that's fantastic that we have them put there.
Mr. Chair, I remembered what I was supposed to do. I'm supposed to send you guys examples of zoning language
Oh, yes.
Where this type of housing is allowed.
Thank you.
So that's what I'm supposed to do. I will do this.
Is this something, though, we still are pursuing for September?
January.
Okay, okay, very good.
So then, I mean, obviously, the September things need... Yeah, for September things need a take.
Yes.
Which goes on to number two, September town meeting items.
So we, there is a lot. We already have almost seven potential things that are coming.
Seven?
Yeah, I know. So let me just talk about my thing. So I'm doing two housekeeping amendments for parking and landscaping, and then for the use table, so that's
Yep.
Me. Where you have Sherries, and I'm only going to talk about what's been submitted. We have a submission to change the, it's actually an Eden's property, Eden's Development over at the Market Basket Plaza, change it from IR, Retail Industrial, to just the General Business Zone, because that is an archaic zoning district that came to fruition in 70 years under Tyrese Old. And it was there because Haldor wanted to be built, but the town was concerned that that area was going, didn't want that area to become retail. They wanted to keep it industrial, so they created...
So it's our eyes...
IR, it's Retail Industrial. It's the only, it's the only parcel in the entire town that is Retail Industrial.
Okay.
And so it's just a vestige of Burlington's industrial presence.
Yeah, okay.
So that's coming up. And so any other zoning that was submitted, Melissa's talked about, and I definitely want to coordinate with the subcommittee on that here and her to kind of dig in a little deeper on that. So, which will be great.
Do I just know when that needs?
Yeah, 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 yeah. I'll let everybody know, and, you know, I think we're going to try to do it in person, but if we don't, I'll try to record it.
Get out of here before we lose power from the storm.
And then the last thing, so through you, Mr. Chair, so Bill signed, Chairman Gaffey signed a minor engineering change for us, staff administratively, to kind of consolidate all the field changes for the Broad and Varicel, so they have their certificate of occupancy, which is very exciting, because that is a super-duper prestigious organization.
It's up at Blue Sky.
Blue Sky Drive. So the Broad Institute. And so that is a world-renowned life sciences organization. And we're hoping that it's going to be a catalyst for others to come.
Yeah.
And so as part of that, they're looking for LEED certification. And so as part of that, one of the points you can get towards your LEED certification is reserving parking for green vehicles.
Yeah.
And so Bill and I had a really good back-and-forth about what is a green
What's a green vehicle?
What's a green vehicle?
What is it?
Well, it is, and guess what? Mine is.
Because it's hybrid?
No.
No, what?
So that's where the questions came in. So...
So we were trying to figure out what is... it's a threshold of miles per gallon.
That's a good way to do it.
And so it's essentially, you know,
Low emission.
Low emission vehicle. So it's basically incentivizing employees and people parking there to make a choice and get a vehicle that...
So they get better parking if they have a green...
Preferred, they call it preferred parking.
Preferred parking if you have a low emission vehicle, which I think, you know, is something for us to...
Where do you get this?
This is off of the LEED certification. So they're actually certifying for a LEED building. So I think we've had a couple before us, so either they're not being certified and they're just being compliant, or they're not getting the extra points for the, if you look at this sign, it's a green vehicle parking. So again, I took umbrance to this only, it's reserved, where I, and now the signs are already up, so this is an after-effect. But I think, looking in the future, the LEED certification actually says it should...
I have no idea if I saw that, and I wasn't on this...
It says, it should say preferred parking. It shouldn't say, it shouldn't say vehicle green parking only, and it should say, it shouldn't say reserved, I think, for future if anything comes across.
Yeah, because it...
Be more compliant to it.
So no offense to anyone who drives a big giant pickup truck, but a big giant pickup truck should not park there, right?
That's correct.
Unless it's an electric, because it's a Rivian.
If they have a...
One of those really ugly, one of those $200,000 Ford...
There you go, okay.
Well, $250.
Or the Cybertruck.
So, yeah, it could actually park there if it's a vehicle, yeah. So just in case you see that come up, so what it was was, you know...
I would now know what that is. I was like, I've never seen that sign.
Well, we didn't know ourselves, so we never knew ourselves, so we started, because we've done a lot of LEED certification buildings.
But you don't go up, I'm sorry.
I really don't.
But you wouldn't go up to Blue Sky Drive unless you worked there.
Right.
You're not going to, you know.
Well, we might see more of them, because there are a lot of buildings.
Why is your vehicle green, Phil?
So it's, according to the definition of LEED tosses you over to this greenvehicle.org definition. You have to have a score. It's not necessarily the mileage itself, but the score itself has to be above 45.
So it's...
So they define that by emission.
Mileage, blah, blah, blah.
All of that.
Exactly, yeah.
Okay, cool.
My vehicle is a 46, so I just make it. So I get to park there with a gas vehicle.
You get to park there.
If I had to, you wouldn't have made it.
It would not have made it.
Not this time.
What? I drive a pickup truck, funny enough.
You do?
I do. Although you wouldn't think I do. All right, thank you for that. So just in case it comes up again, it just was a definition, and I said, well, maybe because of that, maybe we need to put something in our bylaws with regard to a green vehicle parking at some point, maybe as part of the...
At one time, we actually had, in order to meet the transportation demand management thing, you know, if you had a group vehicle, like a game, everybody then...
Yep, carpooling, share parking. Yep, yep, exactly. Similar, yeah.
It's just, I like the idea. I think it's something to think about.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
One last thing to discuss.
Sure, of course. Yep, anybody.
Attendance for July, July and August meetings.
Right.
If anybody knows if they're unable to attend.
What are those dates?
I have a suggestion. I think you should put the picture off till September, only because I think...
Well, irrespective of the picture.
Oh, yeah, it was only because we were just saying, like, when he said, like, tonight, if it was the picture, like, if it didn't get canceled, it would have been, he wanted to wear a suit jacket.
Of course.
It's awful.
Yeah, it is.
You know, like, stuff. Staff always tells us ahead of time.
We try.
Put on our fancy clothes.
Well, because like, the question, especially for the July meeting, is because we have the September, no, we have the September item, so we really need, we can't jeopardize canceling.
So if anybody's planning to go on vacation during that time?
I don't have that.
I was actually scheduled, but I declined.
And so just a reminder, so I have it up on the screen.
I didn't care. Well, my wife's, my wife's going to go, my kids are going to go.
You really pushed your luck there, Chair.
I get to be a bachelor.